Thank you very much. I will ask everyone who's out in our audience today to please turn off any electronic devices. Thank you. And if you want to make public comment, this is a good time to go to the back of the room, doesn't matter what item it's for, and pick up a green slip like this, write your name and the information on it, and give it to Danny here, and Danny will make sure it gets up to us. Thank you very much. Do we have any requests for continuances, withdrawals, ex-agenda items?
No, we don't.
No, okay. Announcements and appeals?
I have one announcement. On Tuesday, this past Tuesday, the 8th, the City Council introduced an ordinance which would suspend medical marijuana dispensaries. And they added, well, they introduced that with an option that would prevent the, well, it would allow a certain amount of processing of applications, but no hearings. So that is going for adoption next Tuesday. And then next Thursday, we'll be coming to the Planning Commission with the Phase 1, the first round of the amendments to the medical marijuana dispensary ordinance.
Thank you. Now I'm going to open public comment. Anyone from the public may comment up to two minutes on anything not on today's agenda. And I do have a request to speak from Mr. James Lee. Come on up, Mr. Lee, two minutes, please. Thank you. Introduce yourself.
My name is James Lee. Good afternoon, Chair and Planning Commission members. It is my pleasure today to invite you to an open house at 500 North Milpus. I've been here before you as an applicant for that location, and a few times also as a speaker for public comment. And this Saturday, December 12th, from 10 to noon, for invitees only, we'd like to open our doors. And the idea is to remove this shroud of mystery and show you the location that we've built out. Operations have not started per se at that location until we have full, final building permit clearance. But we'd like to invite members of the Council and members of this commission to take a look at the location at 500 North Milpus afterwards. From 12 to 2, we'd like to open our doors to members of the public as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We hope to see you.
And with that, I'll close public comment, not seeing anybody else coming forward. And we will start with the consent item, the application of Jim Zimmerman for the city of Santa Barbara, or, excuse me, for the Santa Barbara Yacht Club. So this is a consent item.
Move to defer the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we have no need of a staff report. How about the applicant? Do you have anything you need to present to us?
Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, I'm Jim Zimmerman, architect for the Santa Barbara Yacht Club. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. If you have any questions on the, how the club works, and we have our Commodore Homer Smith and our Vice Commodore Roger Christman that could answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Any questions for Mr. Zimmerman while he's up here? No? Okay. I'll open the public hearing, public comment. Anybody wishing to make public comment on this item, you need to have a green slip up here for Mr. Cotto.
I don't have any green slips.
All right. Thank you. Then we'll close public comment, and the matter's to the commission. Any comments? Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just an enclosure of existing space and moving a stairway to a safer, to make it safer for people to leave the building if necessary. And so it seems to me that it's an appropriate improvement, and I would move to grant the required.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Lodge and a second by Mr. Bartlet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You have your project.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll go to our next item, which is a report. This has to do with, oh, this is the application of Mike Foley for Casa Esperanza. Okay? And for this, we do have a staff report, I'm sure.
Good afternoon, Chair Larson, Commissioners Kelly Broadduson, Assistant Planner. This is an update of the Casa Esperanza Homeless Center. At the Planning Commission meeting of May 21st, 2009, the commission requested that CASA return with an update on alternative lunch locations, and also requested to see a report that was prepared by the Fielding Institute. And it studied the number of contacts that members of Casa Esperanza had with the police department. Today, we have Mike Foley from Casa Esperanza, and he's here to discuss his results in seeking out alternative locations for the lunch service. And we also have Don Bushnell from the Fielding Institute to answer any questions on the statistics with the police department. We also have Ms. Sue Gray from Housing and Redevelopment, and Alex Altavia from the police department. And with that, I'll turn it over to you for, or I'll turn it over to Mr. Foley for his portion of the presentation.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Foley. And even though we said your name twice, you'll need to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair Larson, members of the committee. Back in the spring, we had come to you and asked for an emergency extension of the bed capacity at Casa Esperanza for a three-month period to deal with an inundation of people who were able to recover and do well in their future, but we would have had to put them out due to our conditional use permit. Within 60 days, rather than 90, we were able to find housing, for those who were able to find housing, we were able to lower our census back to the 100 members. As a part of that, we had two things that we brought to you that were created and designed to give you more information and to create some potential mitigations. The first is in regards to our lunchtime community kitchen program. And one of our goals was to work to see if we could find one or more additional locations where we could find small off-site satellite places for people to come and get food, rather than necessarily having to go back into the Milpus corridor and into Casa Esperanza. The good news is that we're right now creating a memorandum of understanding with the new fellowship church on the corner of Cota and Milpus Street. They have a space that's able to handle folks coming to be able to come and get lunch. We believe that we could help 50 or so people at that location. We're going to target folks who are currently coming to Casa Esperanza who are not homeless, who have to come to CASA in order to get their lunch. And we think there may be homeless people in the Haley Street corridor who are coming all the way down to Milpus who may be able to come to that location. The second thing is we've done some outreach with the Mental Health Association, and we're currently working with them to see if it's possible for us to use our community kitchen program to provide additional lunch services at the Friendship Center, so that some of those who are mentally ill can receive services there rather than at Casa Esperanza. Last night, the Grace Lutheran Church took a vote to determine whether they could help us and how much they could help us with creating a food location up on the Upper State Street area. I haven't heard back from them on how it went, but I did meet with their board chair, and we're quite hopeful that we'll be able to create something. So that's the progress that we've made in regards to offsites. We still do the St. Mark's location in Isla Vista. It's very successful since Casa Esperanza took over the community kitchen. The number of people who attend that program has grown from 25 to 45 or 50 a day. So the other thing that we did was we got a, at no charge to us, we had a study that was done by the Fielding Institute to take a look at the contacts that people who come to Casa Esperanza have with the police. And I'll turn that over to Don Bushnell, who will review that with you. I know that you have it. But these are the two things we were asked to come and report to you.
Come on up, and please introduce yourself, Mr. Bushnell.
Hello. I'm Professor Emeritus from Fielding Institute, and happy to report on the study that we conducted this past summer, looking at percentage of public contacts with the police department involving arrests or citations or misdemeanors by members of the Casa Esperanza membership. Our findings for calendar year 2008 shows that we had 1,345 contacts with members of Casa Esperanza resulting in arrests or citations. Given the projection of 14,603 arrests for the calendar year of 2008, this percentage of total arrests and citations is under 10% or 9.2%. We asked what percentage of Casa Esperanza members, which totaled for the year 2008, 1,195 members, had such contact. It turns out that 402 individual CASA members, or 33.6%, had contact with the police department. This means that the police contact records of Casa Esperanza members showed no contact with the other 793, or 66.4% of Casa Esperanza members. Of the 402 members with police department contacts, 23 members, or 5.7%, had 11 or more contacts, accounting for 33% of the total police department contacts. This is 7% of the 402 contact members at Casa Esperanza in 2008. This 7% were responsible for 1/3 of all police department contacts. And just 1.9, or under 2%, of all the Casa Esperanza members for 2008 were responsible for 1/3 of police contacts. Number three, if these police department contacts of those contacts, 180%, 180, I'm sorry, were overnight residents, 44.8% who slept at the shelter. The other 222, or 54.7%, used the shelter's day services only and did not sleep there. Conclusion was, the overnight residents were less likely to have contact with the police department. And finally, contacts with the police department limited to, were they limited to or contacted and concentrated in particular areas of the city? Well, almost 70% of contact of CE members with the police department took place in the beach waterfront areas, together with the downtown area east of State Street, and another 13.5% took place on the Lower East Side. So over 80% of all contacts were in the beach waterfront area on the Lower East Side. So that concludes our report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Justice?
Madam Chair, it's good to get those numbers. I guess my question is, what does it really mean? What do you take away as far as insights from the survey that you conducted that can help us as planning commissioners to better understand the degree to which this facility is working well or not working well, and those types of kind of indirect, messy questions?
We concluded, as I reported here, that overnight residents were less likely to have contact misdemeanor reports with the police department. That was one conclusion. And secondly, we found that the percentage of those with contacts with the police department were occurring in the waterfront area, but not necessarily in the area where Casa Esperanza is situated. That the percentage overall was about, as I said, 83% in the Upper East Side area. So it did not necessarily mean that those congregating at Casa Esperanza were in trouble with the police. And then the rather surprising finding was that the 33% of all of our contacts with police department, all of Casa Esperanza contacts, were attributed to just 5% of the membership of Casa Esperanza. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
At this time, I'd like, oh, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Larson. When we met with Casa Esperanza some months ago, there were several elements of the Fielding Study. And one of them that was proposed was a before and after scenario. And I'll just read from those minutes. It said that using this data, we will then compare how many members had contact, members of Casa Esperanza, had contact with police before entering the shelter, and how many after, basically. It was a before and after question. And I wonder if there was time in the report or data available to talk to that point?
There was not, unfortunately. We did take a careful look at the one year, 2008, but the study we had did not justify any conclusions to be drawn about behavior before or after that period of time. That would take another report.
So it wasn't studied, or there wasn't any significant issue raised?
Was not studied.
Was not studied, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. And we have two speaker slips, so, excuse me. Anybody else want to bring, oh, anything, staff, do you have anything else that you need to do, contribute? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So I have two people listed on one slip, Juliana and Bruce Rickard from The Habit. So first Juliana, and then Bruce, followed by Bruce. Thank you.
Well, I'll just, he doesn't need to have anything to say.
Okay. That's fine.
Bruce and Brent, Bruce is my brother-in-law, and my husband Brent Rickard have owned The Habit for 30 years. We operate four locations in Santa Barbara. The interesting part of that is our Milpus location is the only location that has seen a decline in year-to-year sales comparisons. And it's, and we believe this is a direct result of the loss of customers due to the impact of the behavior and the traffic flow of the individuals using CASA. The statistics about the police reports and contacts is interesting to us because we have simply given up on calling the police. There's no animosity for us towards the police or their lack of ability to respond. We know they simply just can't respond multiple times a day to the issues that we experience on a daily basis at our location. Besides the cleanup that we need to do every morning, drug and alcohol, paraphernalia, feces, urine, blood, vomit, we have such an incredible aggressive panhandling and loitering problem that occurs inside of our restaurant, on our patio, and in our parking lot. It takes us five seconds to lose a customer that we've spent years building a loyalty with. I've had several female customers tell me they won't come to our Milpus location. None of this has changed. We try to communicate with CASA. Sometimes the response is that we can't necessarily be sure that these are their clients, but we do know that just simply their location and the services they provide do create that traffic flow and that pattern of traffic and behavior from their location through the gas station and through our parking lot. We work really, really hard to take care of our employees and our customers. It seems to be sort of silly. When we lose revenue, it's a silly effect on everybody because the city will be affected as well. We won't be able to employ as many people. Our revenues are down. You know, that means everything is affected. So we just really hope and plead that somebody will help us get some assistance from CASA. I mean, to be plain, they should actually have to increase their circumference of surveillance and patrol to include the gas stations and our parking lot. Having them onsite at our parking lot a few hours a day at choice times of the day would help us immensely just to keep the aggressive panhandling and the loitering that happens off our property. We are not immune to the sympathy of the problems of the homeless. We are completely empathetic. We support several ventures citywide. But we can't stay in business under these kind of circumstances. And so increasing that traffic flow and the day use and all that is just going to negatively continue to impact us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob Hanson, followed by John Dixon. Welcome, Mr. Hanson.
Three minutes?
Two minutes.
Two minutes?
Mm-hmm.
It has three on here. Anyway, I'd like to raise a white flag, and we'll pretend like it's, oh, the Indians and the white people, you know, trying to come up with treaties and things like that. I don't know if you saw the movie they had on KCT of the Indian in America. I think the title was, "We Will Remain." And I think, no matter what we do, the homeless will remain, you know? Ending homelessness is a buzzword. It's not real. Now, if America would just sit there and do something as a nation, which we should, we could probably get a handle on it. But Santa Barbara has its homeless people. And I think the Hamburger Habit, they need to have a bigger parking space. I think that's one of the biggest things happening down there. And if they'd like to sell their business, I would buy it. We could put in fruits and vegetables there, maybe have a legal place where people could take their medicine, cannabis, or something like that, and, you know. But anyway, so back to their treaty. I would like to talk about a treaty because at Rainbow Park, which is the epicenter of what's really happening around that whole area, they closed the bathrooms, they've taken the bleachers out. And so we need to talk about, you know, how can we make that better? I don't think we're ever going to have it perfect, but, you know, say if we were to have a day center like Mr. Foley mentioned, or a place, another place to feed. Mr. Foley's mentioned before about a 24-hour drop-in center. I think we should get that going.
15 seconds. 15 seconds.
Okay. So anyway, I want to sit there, and let's have some talks, and let's try to come up with best solutions. Because we're never going to get rid of the homeless, but we could do better. And State Street, you know, people aren't as many here because they went over to the shelter, but now we need to deal with what's happening there, and especially for the other businesses like The Habit and Tri-County Produce. So if we could sit there and really be serious about coming up with other solutions instead of just policing it and closing bathrooms.
Thank you. Yes. Yes. Mr. Hanson, could you return to the podium, please?
Mr. Hanson, could I ask you, and you may not have the answer, this is a kind of a what-if curiosity question. I'm happy that you're here today. I always enjoy hearing what you have to say.
Thank you.
The question I have is, has to do with healthcare access, and if you think, or have an opinion, if there was more rehab or facilities where people could get a bed to deal with substance abuse issues. And in Santa Barbara County, we know there's literally less than 20 such beds. And Casa Esperanza's filling in as best they can. But I would love to hear your opinion on whether you think that kind of facility would be of value.
I think, you know, it's proven already that people, I know people that have stopped and getting their lives back together. So having facilities like that are great, and having the El Correo is great, and having a shelter there is great. But still, we need to all work together, because we're all in this together. And people that have gotten into rehabs and housing, they've changed their lives. And so it's great. And I think we need more.
So helpful to know what actually is working.
Yeah, it's working, but we need The Habit so that when they go to detox, then there's someplace to go from there, too. They used to talk about that at DePaul, and they were going to have the sober center, detox center, then get into housing. So we need the health thing. And some people aren't going to make it, but, you know, even to slow down is a start. And have, you know, and maybe just, you know, have more beds, and they need to be run with the homeless involved, too, because a lot of times it's like, oh, we're going to do this for you, and you've got to, you know. But everybody wants to make that place better, you know, and they want to help each other. Even the people at the park, there's problems, but you know what? That is a community, and they're helping each other the best they can. At the Petron Memorial Building on Thanksgiving Day, Lois Cap showed up and said, hey, you guys are helping each other. And I think that's what it's all about. It would be nice if America or the city was helping, but the homeless have to help themselves. And they can see, they love to see people slow down and get off to the, whatever they're doing in their lives, and go, hey, that's a success story. And it's happened through the shelter even. But, you know, there's all kinds of little twerks happening out there, too, of pressure and, so we need to love each other and try to do better and help each other. And I think most people want to do that. And in the homeless family, they want to do that. They want to see success stories, and so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. John Dixon, followed by Ron Fox. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Dixon, owner of Tri-County Produce. And I believe, I hope you got my letter on Monday that was submitted? Okay. I just kind of wanted to come on record stating that, you know, I'm a board member of CASA and the task force, and I've been in this for 10, 11 years, thousands of hours of meetings. And while Casa Esperanza does a wonderful job, Mike Foley does a great job, and he's been the best administrator that's been there in all the years of CASA. And they help a lot of people, a lot of people in need, and they're doing a great job, and they're going to continue doing a great job. As I said in my letter, there's, you know, but, the but is, there is definitely collateral damage in the neighborhood as a result of CASA's operations, which is very concerning. And I come here just to shine light, bring attention to that. As I said in my letter, to be on record, December 1st, last Tuesday, we had a shoplifter we called on that was a Casa Esperanza resident. Thursday, Wednesday, another man was urinating in public on the Hamburger Habit wall as I walked around the corner, and he was somebody that eats there all the time. Thursday, another shoplifting incident from a Casa Esperanza resident. And Sunday, I had to call the police with four men drinking right across the street from the store and urinating on the walls. Monday, I had to call the police on another incident.
Please, we have to have order. We hear you. So if you would fill out a green slip, you're welcome to come up and address us. Otherwise, hold your silence, please.
I only bring up these points not to be against CASA by any means, but the report that may state that while percentages and numbers are good, they're definitely not good in the Lower Milpus and East Beach area. I think it's no secret that the Carrillo Ballpark is a mess. But it's a mess, hallway from Carrillo Ballpark all the way up to the 101 freeway and in between. And you go to The Habit, and you see people panhandling with customers all the time, often urinating on the walls between them. I've seen that numerous times, that people that are intoxicated. And I just hope, again, like, I agree with everybody, even what Bob said, we all come together and find solutions, but so far, there's definitely not a solution. We've got to keep working on it, but be aware that Milpus is definitely problematic, and I look forward to solutions. I've been there 25 years at Tri-County Produce, and it's gotten kind of ugly lately. So hopefully, we can all work on making it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Please stay. We have a couple of questions, sir. Mr. Fox. Mr. Thompson and Ms. Jacobs.
Mr. Dixon, you said it's gotten ugly recently. Is that to infer that things are deteriorating in your experience in that area?
I think it goes up and down, and there's no doubt that as police come and do heavy activity and sweeps, as Mike knows as well, Mr. Foley, that things improve. You know, if they could only do that 24/7, or seven days a week, sure, it would make the neighborhood improved. But I think overall, I would not say that the neighborhood has improved. I think we still have significant problems.
If you're seeing deterioration in the, in increase in problems, would you say what kind of time period this is occurring over? Is it just recently in the last year, or is it over the last several years?
I think you could probably look at even the past 10 years. I mean, there's been, there's been curves where it goes up and it goes down with times.
In your opinion, it's generally going down?
No. I would say no. It hasn't generally gone down. I think it's pretty bad right now.
Oh, well, maybe we're using a different term.
In the last few years.
Things are getting worse, is what you're saying.
Yes. And I think it's definitely gotten worse.
Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you. I think one part of Commissioner Thompson's question that I was interested in is if you think it's, is there a seasonal aspect? And then I have another question, but I'm just, ad hoc, is there a seasonal aspect?
There is definitely a seasonal aspect. When the winter shelter opens up on December 1st, there can be definitely an influx of more people in the neighborhood.
Okay. And my second question, we heard from the business owner of Habit, Hamburger Habit, and they felt that calling the police hasn't been very helpful. And I'm wondering what your experience has been in terms of police response, results from your call.
We are not afraid to call the police at all. We do prosecute and arrest all shoplifters, and we always, being right in the trenches, seeing across the street, when we see illegal activities such as drinking in public, we do our best to call the police on a regular basis. And there are times when you get sort of immune to it as well, and you're like, ah, not again. And you don't call. You go through periods of that as well. We do, though, however, try and call as much as possible. Response with the police.
But when you call, yeah.
When we call, response from the police can vary, even whether it's a shoplifter or somebody in the streets that were calling us drunk out there. They could come in five or 10 minutes, and sometimes you might wait an hour or two. It depends on their calls for service or whether they're out at the time. For instance, on Monday, we had a drunk couple at the Carrillo Ballpark. An ambulance and a fire truck came with the lights on because somebody called 911. They were drunk. They couldn't even walk. The fire truck and ambulance got out, the paramedics looked at the people, the one girl couldn't even walk. The ambulance and paramedics left, and I'm like, looking at, why are they leaving? And they cannot take somebody in if they refuse service, so they didn't want to be taken in, the drunk person. And there was no police that showed up, so I got on the phone and called dispatch. And about 35, 40. phone and called dispatch, and about 35, 40 minutes later, a police car came and ended up taking the woman who was drunk, she couldn't even walk, in the back of the police car and took her away, and the other man went on his way. So it does, it just varies from time to time.
Okay, varies from time to time, and have you ever had a conversation with the beat captain of, of your district?
I've had many conversations and know many of-
But with that person, because there's, I've had a similar problem in my neighborhood, just so you know, and it's not as bad as what you've got, but I know that when I call, I get inconsistent response, and over time, talking with neighbors and then talking with the beat captain and getting a one-person call has helped, and I'm, I'm just wondering if that step has, has happened yet in your neighborhood.
I, I've talked to many of the police officers, there's, you know, your B.C., B-coordinator's not always on duty 24/7.
This is true, yeah.
So you can't always call him when you have an immediate problem, he may be tied up, and maybe his day off, he may be in an important meeting, I always use the dispatch number and call dispatch and let them know who I am, and they, of course, put it in the queue to send an officer by as soon as one is available.
Okay, good, that answers my question.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you.
Ron Fox, please, followed by Tim Warner.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I was sitting and listening to John Dixon, I am the president of the board of Casa Esperanza, and I was sitting and listening to John, who was on our board, and I was absolutely amazed at what he was saying, because he is one of the most active, productive, best board member that we have, and it's an amazing situation to have somebody who is so negatively affected sit on our board and be as supportive as John is, and I just hope that he continues to help the way he has and to work with us. It is an ongoing problem, we know that, the people from Hamburger Habit who, Habit, who I happen to know, we met with last Friday, I'm not sure whether they wrote this letter before or after Imelda Loza and I met with them, but it was really the first contact that we had with him, we hope that we can have a relationship with them and work with them so that we can try and mitigate many of these problems that go on down there, we know that they go on, we just have to work with our neighbors, reach out to our neighbors in the vicinity, and see if we can't solve this problem. It is a problem, we're not trying to shy away from it, and we hope that we will be able to work it out. If you have any questions, I've had to answer.
Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Fox? The owner of Hamburger Habit suggested that the, the security, you apparently have some kind of security in the immediate area of Casa Esperanza, is that correct?
Yes, but I think maybe Mike Foley would be a better person to answer, I'll try and answer for you, but-
Okay, well, I just wondered, she requested that that be extended, the area that's covered be extended, and particular, particular, I suppose, at busy hours, is that a possibility? Perhaps you or Mr. Foley would like to answer that question.
Well, certainly, as you know, these things have costs, and we'd certainly be interested in exploring that, but what I think is important for you to understand, and everyone to understand, is that our job is to have a relationship with the people in the neighborhood and try to respond as best we possibly can, so I'd like to have Imelda Loza come up and talk to you about our effort in response to the Habit.
Well, before you, before you sit down, we're not done asking questions.
Oh.
Don't go away, we've got you now.
I, I think it certainly is a possibility, but I think there's a number of things that could be done, and we've been willing to do, that we'd like to see, you know, how that, how that pans out, I think it's certainly fair to make that request, it's fair to explore it, but I think it's also important to explore the entire issue, and it's only last Friday that we began to explore that, and I'll give you an example, we've asked Ms. Richard to chair the Milpus Action Task Force to have a leadership role in that, so we've actually done a number of things, you haven't heard yet what it is that we've done and what we were attempting to do, and what we set up with the Habit to do on Friday to see if we can get to a better resolution, it seems to me if we work through all of those things and those things don't work, we need to take a look at that, but there's also a number of things that are going on in the community, you were briefed last week on the 12-point plan that the city has to address the issues of homelessness, none of the things that are in that 12-point plan that are designed to deal with and help the situation in the Milpus area have occurred yet. Now, some things have happened, for example, the police have decided, as we talked about last time, to deal with the Cabrillo Ballfields as a drug problem instead of a homeless problem, and although there are indeed problems that continue to go on in that area, the number of people on a daily basis who are in that park have reduced from 35 to 45 a day, to anywhere from 10 to 20 a day, so although there are still problems, and those problems need to deal with and would lead someone like Mr. Dixon to say, we have not yet done enough, and there are still a lot of problems to solve, that's true, but things have been done in that neighborhood that have addressed that problem, and when you talk about people urinating in the neighborhood, well, the bathroom was closed at the Cabrillo Ballfield, now that had a positive effect on the number of people there, but there certainly has to be an expectation that for a period of time, as all of the things that need to happen down in that area occur, that there will be a shakeup and there may be some behavioral problems that, that are, that are seen, so.
Okay, and, and if you could just refresh my, my memory, the last time you were here, as I understand, the people who come just for food, they are, they are screened and they get a pass or a card or something?
Yes, everyone is required to have a membership card, and everyone is respire, expected to have a tuberculosis clearance to come into the building.
Okay, and has there been consideration of, I, I was disappointed, I was kind of hoping that the, that not as much as turned out in the survey, were residents of Casa Esperanza are among those that are causing the problems, I was hoping it was pretty much the people that came just for meals, but that's not the case, have you considered the idea of withdrawing food privileges from those who?
We do.
You do?
One of the things, for instance, that we expect, and Mr. Dixon, for instance, has been very good about, when he has a problem with somebody in the neighborhood, he sends us a picture, and he sends us an identification of those people, and I can tell you, the last three or four that he sent, those people aren't receiving services at Casa Esperanza right now, we respond as quickly and as best we can, it's not always perfect response, we have 200 people that we're dealing with, however, when it comes to Mr. Dixon and others, we try to respond, and like I said, in regards to the Habit, I, I'd really like to have Ms. Loza tell you what it is we're trying to do with the Habit in particular.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a quick question for you, please, so, so the, the restrooms at the Casa, at Casa Esperanza are available only to people who can pass the portal, is that it?
That's correct, they have to be a member of Casa Esperanza, and if they're a member at any time between 8 o'clock in the morning and 4:30 in the afternoon, they can come and use the bathroom at Casa Esperanza.
Okay, but nobody else can?
That's correct.
Okay, I couldn't.
No.
Okay, just checking, okay, thank you. All right, I'll have to go over the Habit. It's okay, thank you, any other questions, any other questions while we have them here? No, thank you very much.
There's any other, I'll come back up.
Yeah, certainly, okay, Tim Warner, please.
The, the question, the initial question about the Habit and Imelda Loza, do you want her to do that now?
Do.
We were going to finish answering the question about the Habit.
Sure, well, let's get through the green slips, and if that's all right with you, and then, okay, so please, please, we have called a speaker, Tim Warner.
If you want to finish with her, that's fine, okay.
That's okay.
My name's Tim Warner, I'm a property owner down on the corner of Arria Del Mar and Caipara de Vayarda, we own and run a vacation rental business that has had significant impact since the shelter first was approved, it's a tough situation, there's a lot of good people that need help and need to be helped out of homelessness and off of addiction, the problem is, that I have with the shelter is that the rules are a little too loosey-goosey, and if people don't want services, they can use certain services but not really help themselves out of addiction or out of the homelessness, so it's an ongoing chronic problem that has devastated the, the neighborhood, there's no other business, and the shelter is a type of a business that has had as much negative impact on this town as the shelter, the shelter, I, I was against the shelter when it first came in, because it's located within 200 feet of two establishments that sell beer and wine, and about another 300 feet or so from another liquor store, so the bad, the location was right in the heart by tourism with beer and alcohol sold right across the street, which makes it tougher the shelter. Now, the shelter is doing very good things, and I don't want to see it go away or anything, I'd like to see it be encouraged to help the people that want help so that we can take care of them, the people that abuse the parks, that don't want to follow the rules of the shelter, I think we need to set something to them that, okay, if you're going to get cited, instead of a citation where they are fined, that they're not going to pay the fine anyways, there's a mandatory going into the services, so that if they're not going to follow the rules of our city, they are forced into procedure that'll help them help themselves, and there's an immense amount of people that come to this town because we do have good services, and we need to keep off, offering these services to help these people, but we need to keep an eye on, on how it's affecting our city, our parks, families don't want to take their kids to parks anymore, because the public, parks are free and, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir, two minutes.
Hello, my name is Daniel Map, concerned citizen, it's good to see you, Sheila. Sheila's the only person here who remembers me 20 years ago talking about bathrooms, it's 20 years ago, it's 10, you know, it was, what, million-dollar bathroom ago, it's like this town has got a serious problem with bathrooms, and I want to know whose idea it was to close the bathroom at Rainbow Park, whose idea was that?
I can't answer that.
Well, I'm pretty sure I know who it is, between John Dixon, the Police Department, needing a boogeyman for the homeless people, they probably closed it just to make a bigger eyesore than you already had, if the Police Department had any integrity or class or were doing their job, they would have dealt with the drug problem down there on its own merit, but they had to exasperate the problem, and they still can't show up for 45 minutes, what are we paying these people for, to ride around in their car and look important? Because that's about all I see them doing, I think it's time we got the Health Department involved with the bathroom closures in this community, and probably a subsequent lawsuit against the city for negligence, you know, I, I can make it an agenda item, or maybe I can just look into some other recourses, I'll have to, I'll have to investigate it, I'm not that good on the law, but I think there are recourses, and I think the Health Department ought to be notified for lack of services in this community once again, the bathrooms at Borders Bookstore have to be closed on a regular basis, which is adjacent to your million-dollar bathroom, because people coming in there and clog their sewer system consequently runs up their bill for their bathroom, why aren't there more bathrooms in this community? Why? 20, 25 years we've been complaining about it, no bathrooms, there's bathrooms in every parking garage in this, in this city, and they're exclusively used for people who have a key to them, why aren't there bathrooms in this community?
Thank you.
I want to know.
Thank you, we'll try to find an answer.
Okay, legally, you're, you're gonna, you know, if you really want to, we can get down to this in a courtroom.
Thank you. Nancy McCready, followed by Bruce Richard, Richard. Two minutes, thank you.
Every Thursday at Casa Esperanza, there, we have a meeting, and this is a meeting for the homeless who reside there, who want to talk about their problems and situations, and I always say to them, well, you have to come up with a solution, if you're going to wine at the meeting, you have to come up with a solution to the problem that you see is facing you here, and it's a really good meeting, and one of the best in town, and I firmly invite you to this meeting every Thursday, it's really good, I really like the Casa, one of the girls came up to me the other day, and she said that she had been raped, and her, her rapist was at the Casa, and she'd called the police, and 40 minutes later, nobody had shown up for her to either question that person or whatever, so what I'm trying to say is that now we have a bathroom that's closed down there, I can't go down there in that area anymore because I'm 64 years old, and if I have to go to the bathroom, it's not as easy to hold it as I used to, it used to be for me, and one time I had to go home and change because of that reason, I see people putting, putting themselves up against the doorways to that bathroom and going to the bathroom in there anyway, and I know it's really a horrendous thing to deduce somebody, and I know the city is saying, well, it was a budgetary thing, but how come all the bathrooms are closed next to where the homeless have to hang out, that's really, so I, I think that that was a lie that was given to me to keep me quiet, I think it's a health and safety issue, and I don't like to see Johnny have to come up and say they're seeing people going against the walls on Milpus Street, it's ridiculous, I think that, I think it was a horrendous situation down there in that bathroom?
10 seconds.
Okay, it wasn't a good thing in that bathroom, and it should have been dealt with, with police.
Thank you very much. Bruce Richard? Our last speaker.
Thank you for taking the time to listen, I've just, I don't know where to start, it's just, I've been in business for 30 years here in town, and we have nothing against Casa and the homeless people, I mean, our heart goes out to them, and the part that, that we struggle with on a daily basis is the fact that, I don't know an exact number on how many people are, you know, drinking and doing drugs, but it's just, that's the part that makes it really challenging for us to run our business, and I'm a pretty fit individual, and at nighttime, I'm scared to go out into my own parking lot and ask a panhandler to leave, because I never know what I'm going to get, and it's really frightening, and at this point, it just seems to be getting worse, it's really hard for me to ask my staff to do that, and it was like Juliana was saying earlier, I mean, it takes years to build the business, and just a, a two-second interaction to ruin it, an experience for a customer for that we've taken years to, to get, and, and, you know, when you sit down in a restaurant, you don't want to be bothered, you know, you're there, you're sitting down eating, and that could be the highlight of your day, and it's ruined, you know, and it's a real problem, and, you know, we have 27 locations and range from Sacramento to Los Angeles, and Santa Barbara, my hometown, where I grew up, where I'm proud to say I'm from, there's more problems here than in all the combined locations put together, isn't that amazing? And it's just, we're just really tired of it, you know, I, we want to help, we want to give back, but we want to see Casa be helping and not enabling, and where is that fine line, where do we draw the line of enabling and allowing them to, you know, you know, get a free meal, get a wash, and then come out and panhandle and drink every day? Because that's what I see, when I'm down there every day, day in and day out, that's what I'm seeing, I'm not here standing before you making it up, and it makes, you know, we love what we do, we take pride in what we do at the Habit, but after a while, it's just, you just get beaten down by seeing the same stuff happen over and over and over, and it's just like a steady flow, and we, we'd like to work together for a solution, you know, and we just need some sort of help to shield it away from, you know, like the gas station to, to the Habit, and we just need to, because it only takes a split second to ruin the experience for the customer, and we want to work together and we love giving back, but it's not working right now, and, and what we think that would help is if we had some sort of security that would help, you know, brush them off so that we didn't have to do the job that Casa should be doing, so I really appreciate you taking the time, and my sister-in-law Juliana, she spent a lot of time with Casa, working with them, and frankly, we've just kind of given up, you know, it's just like, I'll start calling them, I met with Mrs. Loza on Friday and Ron, and, you know, they want me to take pictures, you know, fine, I'll go out and take pictures, but I got customers to deal with, too, you know, I don't have time to document and photo during lunchtime, you know, I got a lot of, we're trying to run a business- You know, I got a lot of, we're trying to run a business too. But I will do that. We'll call the police. I feel sorry for the police. I feel sorry for the firefighters. I mean, they're dealing with the same people day in and day out, and it's just, you know, it's hard to deal with, and it makes it not fun to be in business. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. So I can't read the first name, but Pennington? Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Pennington? Welcome.
Good afternoon. Mr. Pennington, SOS Advocacy Group. I've got some, some issues to speak with the city regarding the location of, I remember going to the Casa when it was a closet hut back in the day before the, the whole construction of it. It's a big step from where they were. Back in the day was just, I think, the homeless, I think there was like 200 or 300 homeless at the time, and I, throughout the years, it's grown to thousands apparently. But there's 20 beds for chronic alcoholics, alcoholics at the Casa, I believe, was the number I heard. And I think there's like 200 hardcore, you know, and, well, if we do the math, that's only 10% of like what really is out there. So you got, you know, 90% of the people that are, have substance abuse, they're obviously not allowed to go to the Casa, they're not allowed to even eat there, you know. They, they are displaced, and it's the people being displaced that become the problem. Then they go to one place, and, and then services are taking from them there. Then the natural thing is they're leaving themselves everywhere. Okay, well, you, you're trying to fix the problem by creating a bigger problem, is what I'm saying here. You know, some of my clients go to Casa Esperanza, and they're mentally ill, some of them are disabled, and they eat there, you know. And, and was it, he was speaking about other lunch places and, you know, and, and if we just keep them on that side of town, well, that's the side of town that's going to have the problems, you know. And if they're all going there, well, it becomes a big problem, you know. And to tackle a big problem, obviously, is the problem. But if, if we start to even everything out, and we start finding different solutions to the problem, and we start scattering it out, then you have little amounts of little problems in different areas, and it doesn't scare everybody.
15 seconds.
If we're going to help people, we, we also can't scare them, the neighborhoods around them, you know, by, you know, you just say Dispensary, or you just say Homeless Shelter, and people get scared. Communities get scared, you know, because an influx of people influx a problem. So I don't know, maybe we should spread it out, be more compassionate. I mean, the kitchens that are going to be feeding the food, we have to make sure that the food is not out of date, people are not getting sick, and, and it's, and it's food that's edible. There has been problems with, with the quality of the food at Casa, but that's another issue. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the commission? Any comments? Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Larson. I know we're not taking any action today, but one issue that has come up over and over again has to do with enforcement, and public urination is illegal, and public intoxication is illegal. And there needs to be a kind of accountability on the part of the residents in terms of, and the clients of the, of the kitchen, in terms of accountability for their actions. And if that can't happen, then there needs to be a police presence to, to work on enforcement issues. And I have had the necessity to call the police in my own neighborhood to ask if they could come and, and talk to and hopefully remove people that were sleeping in a place where they weren't supposed to be sleeping, on private property. And I was told, well, they're just camping, you know, we're not going to do anything. And I, I can see the police coming to that conclusion, that it's a no harm, no foul kind of a thing. But what I'm hearing in the Casa Esperanza neighborhood has stepped over the threshold of where that kind of police attitude is acceptable. And I really think that we're into an issue where we need to look at a better police presence, perhaps at either permanently or at least temporarily, seasonally, an on-foot or bicycle police presence where they're out of their cars. And, and I've, I've resisted making this recommendation before because why kick someone when they're already down? But I'm hearing from the people in the shelter that this 33 or 40% of bad actors is really a problem, that it's making the lives of everyone uncomfortable because the people who are obeying the rules and who are being accountable are suffering the consequences of the bad behavior of, of other people. The bathroom closure would be one example. So as, as time goes on and we come up for another review of this issue, I'm going to ask for some kind of, of a, a police recommendation or idea for how illegal activity in this area can be dealt with in both a preventative and an ongoing manner, as well as responding when time allows to the calls of businesspeople who are calling for help. And I see we have some members of the, of our officers back there. I don't know if they've, would like to speak to that, but there needs to be some kind of other presence and response available to, to this particular part of town, and maybe it's an expense to the city, or maybe it's an expense in some other way.
Good afternoon. I'm Alex Eltigal. I'm the Patrol Division Commander. And I'll speak to the criminal element in that area kind of from a customer service perspective. We handle calls for service either from the public, 9/11 calls for service, or if we have a certain area that we believe is a problem area based on criminal activity, no matter who's involved, we will frequently deploy directed patrols. We have done both in that area. Actually, John Dixon and I sit on two separate boards, and we have a very good working relationship. I personally, myself, as a Patrol Division Commander, have been down on bicycles in that area enforcing laws that have been violated. So frequently, I hear broad sweeping statements regarding frustrations in response to specific crimes that the public calls. And from a customer service perspective, because I've been on the other end also, I can, I can understand that frustration from a micro perspective. But I want to go ahead and put it kind of in a macro concept, context, because we do have a police force that needs to respond to calls for service from the public on a citywide basis. So when the public does call, we understand that that specific call to that individual is the most important thing in their life. And if it's somebody that's intoxicated or urinating, that, that's the way we feel also. However, from a broad macro perspective, we have to prioritize what we're going to respond to, because citywide, if you put it in context, there are other priority calls for service that may deal with life-threatening situations that we need to go ahead and respond to first. So if the public has some concerns about a specific response time, I suggest they immediately contact the watch commander, because those are my sergeants and my lieutenants that should be managing our police force. And then from a proactive perspective, we frequently do that. And I think some of the challenges or frustrations from the public is that when officers show up, our mere presence has the ability to change behavior. Criminal activity just ceases. We can take enforcement action and criminal activity ceases. But then when we leave, that criminal activity picks back up again, no matter what level it is, you know, whether it's infractions or misdemeanors. The challenging part about it, and I think the frustrating part about it from the public, is the ability to sustain that enforcement posture. And enforcement is one element, because, you know, many of these people, quite frankly, aren't committing any crimes. And there might be situations where we specifically go down to the ball field where people are hanging out, but as we look at that and investigate, there is no specific crime that they're committing. And we are only constitutionally able to go ahead and take enforcement action on, on criminal activity. So I think the frustration from the public may be the sustainment aspect of it. But I want to let you know that we, if the public does call, we will respond in a timely manner. If they don't feel that they're getting the response that they feel they deserve with their call, they should contact the watch commander. And we will frequently go ahead and put directed patrols in those areas. But enforcement is only one tool in order to go ahead and try to resolve or mitigate this problem. I'm available for any other specific questions that you might have.
Oh, pretty much my main question. I do have one more item that I would like to address, and then maybe other people would like to speak with our officer. And again, it has to do with, should this come back to us, or do we have any other ideas upon hearing this report? And I do want to speak to the ball field issue because it's unfortunate that the bathrooms had to be closed, but it was a reasonable action on behalf of Parks and Rec and on behalf of the city because the, the maintenance and control issues there have gotten out of hand. I like to play tennis, and if I want to play tennis and be on a tennis court, I have to have a park ID card and pay $5 or $10 a day to use a court based on who's playing. And I don't know if we could do something similar at the ball fields. You know, if you're there to play ball, great, but if you're there to sit on the bleachers, then that's not what, not what the park is there for, because the Parks and Rec Commission and their budget has to deal with maintaining those facilities. So that's really in the Parks and Recreation basket. It's not in our basket, but I do think that there are some solutions that we can, as a city, come up with together. And some of them have to do with controlling the, the ball field, but I think a larger aspect has to do with some kind of regular and routine enforcement presence in this area. Maybe it's not every day. Maybe it's a neighborhood watch. Maybe it's some other kind of partnership. But to just let it be, and for me to hear a business owner say that they, their livelihood is threatened, maybe their life is not threatened, but their livelihood is threatened, their business is having trouble, and it's because of the conditions in their neighborhood, which they're trying hard to ameliorate, but they can't, they can't do it by themselves. So I see it as a really serious problem and something that deserves the full attention of the city. The city gives, gets a great benefit from Casa's being there, and yet we need, as a city, to put some effort into controlling crime problems around the facility. Otherwise, we're being negligent in our duty to our neighbors and our businesses that are in this neighborhood. And the last thing I had, I thought we were going to hear from someone from the Milpus Task Force. Did we have a Speaker of Record for that group? Because I thought that was, that was on today's agenda, and I, I didn't see anybody speak. So that's the last of my questions, and I'll look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions for you, Captain, so.
Thank you, Commander.
Today, we're not taking any action, and certainly not any land use action. We were to receive the report from the fielding study, and I find that while a fielding study is interesting in the statistics it presents, most of the discussion today is about the impact on the neighborhood that apparently Casa Esperanza is acting as a magnet to draw problems into the neighborhood. And I don't know how we use the study to help alleviate those problems. It may be only a small percentage of Casa Esperanza's clients that are part of the problem. It may be that there are people drawn into the area because they can get meals there or something. And the issue isn't homelessness, as Mr. Hanson said. The issue is illegal behavior by people who are homeless. It's not that people are being victimized because they're homeless. The problem is the illegal behavior by those people. Now, I would think that folks that are getting fed by Casa Esperanza but causing problems in the neighborhood are in fact biting the hand that's feeding them, because they're causing their own problems. People are rebelling against even having Casa Esperanza in the neighborhood because of the impact on the neighborhood. So I would think that it would behoove all of the folks who are not causing problems to help police up the few, we hear only 10%, police your own people that are causing the problems where you can to help the problem, help improve the problem. The issue about bathrooms, I would hope the staff will take back to City Council. We can't take any action on that, but, you know, we've heard people complaining about lack of public facilities for years. And I know people tend to trash public facilities, but I also know that there's some pretty rudimentary facilities possible that would at least alleviate some of the problems. And so we need to take that back to council and, and put it on the agenda for them to do something rather than just keep trying to sweep it under the rug. It's not a land use issue for the Planning Commission, so we can't take any action. And I would, I don't know what our outcome of today's meeting is, if staff's going to take all of our comments and bring them to the council, or just file it away. I don't know, but those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, this particular situation has many levels, it seems. There's this, this bigger picture, broader level where we're seeing the homeless grow from hundreds to thousands over five or 10 or 20 years. If I could finish, please, without comments from the audience. And then on this, there's citywide issues that have been brought up as far as the bathroom use and what have you. And what lands in our lap is the issue of land use compatibility and the conditional use permit. And that's where I am particularly sensitive as a neighbor that occasionally has to police the behavior of, of land uses in our neighborhood that create nuisance from time to time. I am particularly sensitive to the comments that were made by, by Mr. Ricard and, and others who are having to, how do I say this? They, it's, the, the burden of solution is put on, on their shoulders as opposed to being more directly related to finding a better way to do the conditional use permit. And I don't know when this, this CUP comes up for review again, but I, I would submit that there is much work to do between what's happened at, at Casa Esperanza and the neighbors and your clients and folks that are kind of feeling the brunt of, of these more broader social problems. But when I, when I hear a suggestion that we might change the way the patrols are done to be more coincidental with some of the business hours, that sounds to me like a new CUP issue that may help still maintain the Casa's ability to provide the services that they do and the manner that they do, which is a success story, but then focus in on solving the problem at hand as it affects the neighborhood. So I'm going to be looking to the CUP review process to see if we can really do the adaptive management that we need to do to minimize the neighborhood incompatibilities. Because I, I think Mr. Because I think Mr. Thompson hit the nail on the head. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm all too familiar with this situation. I had my office in that neighborhood for 19 years. We recently moved three or four years ago. And it all comes back when I hear this presented to us today. And I see that there, it looks like there's a real failure to communicate. And when you look at the statistics that were presented in the fielding report, essentially 2% of the clientele of CASA, that's roughly eight people, attribute to 350 of the police contacts. That's almost 45 contacts per person. So how is it that we can have that many police contacts, and either the police failing to inform CASA so that they can then reprimand or eliminate that clientele, or does CASA Esperanza know about it and choose not to deal with it? Somehow, I can't understand how you have so few people with so many violations still be members. And I think that Commissioner Thompson is right. You need to police yourselves. You're going to put yourselves out of business by your own behavior. Sure, we need to have the police for the criminal behavior, but you've got to do some of this from within. And I really have empathy for the neighboring businesses. I mean, the pain is being spread throughout that neighborhood. And, you know, there's going to come a point where perhaps the CUP goes away if it can't change. But somehow, we have all the analysis. It's all in writing. We have all the reports, but nothing's been done with it. I mean, it comes up here, and you wonder, well, why did we even do all this if there's no repercussion for people that are such repeat offenders still being part of this organization and creating the havoc for the other 98%? So I'm really baffled by that. I hope somebody will take it to heart and look for an internal solution and not expect the police to solve everything. Granted, the police have their role, but this is a self-created problem that really needs to be dealt with from within. So I would like to hear more feedback on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartlet. Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. Just one more on-topic thing. The CUP and our considerations relating to this report had to do with the differences between CASA Esperanza's resident population and the community kitchen open door. And this report basically put into clear data what many people had felt before, which is that the open-door daytime food kitchen is the larger part of the problem. And should CUP come back for discussion, that is going to be a part that is going to be extremely vulnerable, in my opinion, in terms of what fits with the neighborhood and what doesn't. The original CUP was to serve primarily the residents of the shelter. That program has expanded. And when I read that 54.7, which is 55% of the shelter's day services, are the ones that are the larger numbers in people who have the Santa Barbara Police Department contacts, that tells me that that daytime program needs some real change. And so that's what I would be looking for, should we be considering the CUP again, which we will be in the near future.
Thank you. And we have, could you introduce yourself, please?
Thank you, Chair Larson, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Sue Gray, and I'm the Community Development Program Supervisor in the Community Development Department. And I just wanted to take a quick moment to kind of put it all in perspective for you. I staffed the Council Subcommittee on Homelessness and Community Relations that's been working on general homeless issues in the city of Santa Barbara for the past year. They developed 12 strategies to address homelessness and community relations. And those consist of enforcement, intervention, and prevention. And I know we went over those a couple months ago when we were here. I think it was at the March meeting. I kind of touched on those. But I just want to bring you up to date. And we do hear a lot of talk about the Milpiss area, the ball fields and issues there. We hear just as much information from the Downtown Organization, the Conference and Visitors Bureau, of the issue on State Street. You know, there's still a large issue in that area, too. We're trying to deal with it as a combined effort. And two things, actually, three things. One of the strategies has to do with coordination with the street outreach workers and the Santa Barbara Police Department. And that's just been getting underway. They've been meeting. They've met several times. They're working on a uniform release of information so that they can share the names. Because I think what we've heard over and over, and what we heard here, was that there's a small number of people who are creating a lot of the tickets, a lot of the issues. And the idea with that group is to really focus on those folks who are creating more police reports and causing some problems. So that's one. You might know that on, when was it, November 24th, City Council approved the Panhandling Education and Alternate Giving Campaign. That was another one of the 12 strategies. And that will include, it's a citywide education campaign, but it's really focused on State Street, Cabrillo, and Milpiss. So those three areas. And we're hoping that all the businesses down there, including The Habit, and John Dixon's been involved in that effort as well, putting that together, will have the alternate giving donation boxes in their businesses with the literature on there, and educating people as to better ways to give, because people are very generous and they want to give, but to educate them that giving to panhandlers doesn't help them. It doesn't help the city. So hopefully, that will help decrease it. And my third one was Panhandling, oh, the detox. We also heard about the recovery, you know, need for recovery beds. We're working with the County of Santa Barbara and actually the South Coast Homeless Advisory Committee, which has representatives from City Council, County Board of Supervisors, City of Goleta Council, and City of Carpandria, working on increasing the number of detox beds on the South Coast. So that's an issue. We've come up with a short-term solution, because the 12 detox beds at CASA Esperanza, six for men, six for women, they found that there was always a waiting list for men, and the women's beds were underutilized, but they couldn't mix and match because they were in two dorms, dorm-style rooms. So what we're working on now is an agreement to temporarily move women up to North County where they have openings in detox, and then open up all 12 beds for men in the South Coast. And then we're looking at finding an alternate location for that and increasing the beds permanently. So those are the three that I can think of now that we're working on. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But just to kind of put it for you, because you've heard a lot today about just CASA Esperanza, the Milpiss area, but it really is a community-wide issue and a problem that is very complex. So, thank you.
Thank you. My comments, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Justice, did you? Okay. My comment is, when CASA Esperanza came before the ABR, I was on the ABR. And there was a lot of optimism and a lot of cooperation from the neighborhood. And I have, and a lot of support from the neighborhood. And I'm sorry to say that I see that that's dwindling away. And it's dwindling away because of exactly what Mr. Thompson said, which is problems caused by a few that are affecting many. And that's most unfortunate. So my empathy is strongly with the businesses. They've certainly stepped up and served on boards and taken care of their property as best they can, and trying to, very hard to stay open. And I do agree that the effort has to come from within the CASA somehow, to put it together and figure something out. Because I think the business community is just about there. And that's what I'm hearing. And I hope, this isn't like a social experiment, this is a big deal. So it's, you know, it has to win and win. So that's what we have to figure out. And it falls on the shoulders of the CASA. You've got the biggest building and the most people. So those are my comments. Any, oh, Sheila Lodge, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I share the frustration of my colleagues up here and of businesses. It's, well, as Grace said, it's a very complex problem, one that has been facing the city for a long time. And given the economic conditions and the city's budget concerns, and Parks and Rec being one of the places where spending is a little more discretionary, the odds of getting the restroom reopened are not very good. There was a meeting last Friday that someone was going to comment a little more and trying to help the hamburger habit. Was someone going to say some more about that?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Imelda Loza. I'm the Associate Director to CASA Esperanza. And in addition to handling the day-to-day services, one of my primary responsibilities is business relations. And let me tell you what I've done in the last year. I have canvassed, cold-called, as well as gone into businesses, 89 to be precise, from the 600 block of Milpiss, all the way down to Batty's Batting Cages, and I don't know what block that is, but including the Railroad Square area by Quarantina. So I've talked to business owners, administrators, and/or managers about what we do, and have given them my contact information, my personal mobile phone, so that, that's not me. So if there is a concern, I want them to feel that they can call me so that we can address those concerns. And I can tell you that of the 89 or so businesses that I've contacted, I've had 20 or so calls from Motoloco, Railroad Square Businesses, Eyeglass Company, Batty's Batting Cages, for sure, Tri-County Produce, as well as Circle K. And when I hear about what's needed from CASA Esperanza, there also has to be a very clear understanding with the business owners that they also have to help themselves. And we can help them with that process. And what I mean by that is that if there's a member out there that is loitering and/or is panhandling, they need to give me a call. I personally go out there and address the issue. I know my members. And if they're panhandling or loitering, we get them into CASA Esperanza, and we try to treat them therapeutically to deal with the underlying issues. But that aside, the commitment has to come from the business owners to call us to let us know. We're not omnipresent. We have limited resources. We have a security counselor that has a certain route that now does include the Circle K slash Habit area. But he's only one person. And so what I have gotten, the commitment from Tri-County Produce, Circle K, and then another business, Seaside Shop, right kitty-corner to Circle K, they give me a call. They give me a call. They take pictures. And in certain instances, they have video camera that takes an image of that member. So identifying that they're a current member of ours, we can then consequence our members. Because to us, there's no severe consequence than denying them a bed when it's cold, or food when they're hungry. But again, we approach it therapeutically, that we want to help them with the underlying issues. Now, I personally contacted The Habit. Six months ago, I've met Luis, which is, I think, is their daytime manager. I gave him my card. My mobile phone was on the back card, back of my card. In six months, I've gotten one call from them. And one time in particular, I went there with my family, because I love The Habit. And so I've taken my own family there, and I affirmatively asked Luis, hey, how's everything going? And he said, there is a member that's come over, and he actually tried to attack one of our staffers, very, very serious concern. Identified who that member was. My street outreach team went out to get him. He is now at CASA Esperanza. He's in the recovery program. It works. But we need to have their commitment to call us to let us know what members, what they're doing, and so that we're able to then address it. I don't know. And what I'm saying is, Tri-County does that, Circle K does that. And it shows that by their affirmative action, taking pictures and videos, and then calling us, there is a decrease in those members repeating either the loitering and/or the panhandling. But we need their help. We need to know. We need to be called.
Okay, one moment. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. I have a question. We hear that a lot of the problems are not caused by CASA Esperanza members, but other people that might be drawn to the area, or maybe they're your lunch customers. When you get called out, assuming all this goes, as you said, what do you do when you find out it's not a CASA Esperanza member, so you can't threaten them with withdrawal of services? How do you deal with it?
That's a great question. And this is what we tell our business members. When we identify that it's not a day service member or a resident member, then we advise the business owner, call the police. They're loitering. They're urinating on your property. This is not, we're not a police department. You need to then do what you need to do to ensure that your business is taken care of. So we let them know, not our member. So now the onus falls on the business owner. And I know that Circle K, when we identify that it's not one of our resident members and/or day members, they are very happy to call the police. You know, so this is how, but we need to have that open line of communication so we can let them know whether or not they're an active member.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the commission?
Steph.
Yep. Steph, you want to wrap us up? Okay. Please, Ms. Jacobs?
Again, our agenda says we were supposed to hear from someone from the Milpiss Action Task Force. And I'm very disappointed that there is no one here to represent that group. It's on our agenda. We asked for it at our last meeting, and there's nobody here.
Chair Larson, Councilmember Jacobs, we apologize for that. However, you have heard from many members of the Milpiss Action Task Force. We had John Dixon.
It's not the same as hearing from a group that meets, that has an opinion as a group, that has formulated leadership and sent a representative. It's just not the same.
Okay. We'll be sure to have that for the next meeting. Thanks.
I'm going to make my practical suggestion. I suggested this 10 years ago. I suggested that CASA Esperanza get a steam cleaning machine to help their neighbors, you know? And I'm going to reinforce that, because I see a group of women, and I was actually inspired by them, working like crazy, picking up trash. I can't remember the exact location, but we were on a field trip. And they were wearing T-shirts that identified them as a little morning crew. And they were out working all together, cleaning up a section of the neighborhood where campers frequented overnight. And I thought that was so outstanding. And, you know, that kind of a simple gesture outreach just impressed me so much. And a steam cleaning machine would do wonders down there. And I just, I can't understand why a simple solution couldn't be found that could benefit the business owners and help the CASA Esperanza people have some work experience. Anyway, that's an old dream of mine, really old. So, okay, thank you. We can't have comment from the audience, unfortunately. It has to come from up here or on a microphone. So, thank you. And I guess that's, we're looking, what's the next step? We're going to hear again?
You will hear at the next update. They're biannual, yeah, twice, once every two years. I think the last one we had was in last February or March?
March.
Oh, sorry. No, March was when they were asking for the increase in the number of beds. So the last update was October of 2008, so October 2010. So about 10 months.
Wow, that is a long time. Could we request something prior to that, an update, a casual thing?
Well, I think you've just had it. I mean, as far as the conditions of approval, no, I mean, as far as the conditions of approvals go, that requires the two-year. And maybe Scott can pipe in. I don't think.
I was thinking of a check-in or something.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm looking at the, I believe, well, it's a Resolution 008-09. This version is attached to your staff report for today's hearing. It does say draft, so I'm not sure if it's the final or not, but it shows that the next report is due May 2010.
My concern is that we've heard all this today, and we have business owners who are wildly impacted. And they're going to have to wait 10 months before they get another chance to come up here and tell us how rotten it is?
Two points. One is, I just said, May 2010, not October 2010. The other is, you're, there... The other is, you're looking to a conditional use permit for a facility to police the personal activities of individuals that are not actually in that facility. We're not talking about a baseball arena and having a problem with the baseball arena. Yes, these people are bringing, they are customers, and Casa Esperanza will need to deal with how their customers act in the environment. Their conditions of approval say that Casa Esperanza will work with their neighbors, will respond to their complaints. You've heard, you now have, I think, enough testimony about that. You've heard enough from Casa Esperanza about what they're doing to respond to those complaints. I'm not sure, unless this Commission is prepared to direct staff to prepare a revocation of the conditional use permit, you're kind of going around in circles. And so the two parties are doing what they're doing. The Casa Esperanza is telling you what their steps are. They're asking for communication. They're, in other words, in one sense, they're meeting their conditions of approval. They're saying that they're meeting and having conversations with their neighbors and communicating about it. So I'm trying to, I'm looking at their conditions of approval and trying to figure out what is it, what is that next step, other than to tell Casa Esperanza and their neighbors to keep doing what you're doing, but do better? And they're both saying, "We're trying." And so.
Okay, thanks. I understand. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. Like Mr. Vincent, I hate running around in circles. I think we actually have a trajectory that we're trying to achieve today. I don't know why it's taking so long, and why we have to keep having one meeting after another to simply meet the conditions of approval for the limited-time expansion of bed capacity. We granted the extra beds, and the condition of approval that we put on it was that we would hear back, that we would hear back on the Fielding Institute study, which we did, and that we would hear back from the Milpus Action Task Force. And here we are, and we have not yet completed the conditions of approval that this Commission granted. And I don't want to let that go, because that was a condition. We did our part, and we have not heard the result. And so if I was to say, "What's the next step?", I would say, "The Milpus Action Task Force needs to be pulled together. The stakeholders need to sit down, and I need to hear a report from the President or the Chairman of the Board or whoever's the leadership of the Milpus Action Task Force," because I haven't heard that, and that was part of the conditions of approval.
Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just the specifics on the conditions of approval, "The uses will not be materially detrimental to the public peace, health, safety, comfort, and general welfare, and will not materially affect property values in the particular neighborhood, because the project will provide a place where the homeless can sleep without loitering in the neighborhood." Unfortunately, I don't think that condition has been met.
Thank you. Please, no comments from the benches. We've already had public comment, so simmer down. Okay.
Madam Chair, I have to ask a question, because the last time we were here, it was about May of last year, or something like that. We did have a report from the Milpus Action Task Force. It was quite a lengthy report, and the only thing that was missing from, and the only reason that we're here now is because the Fielding Study wasn't done yet. So the purpose of this report was to inform the city and the planning commission of the results of that Fielding Study. I didn't, I had thought that the Milpus Action Task Force condition had been fulfilled the last time.
Yep, we'll just, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Canto.
Madam Chair, staff requests a short break, maybe about 10 minutes, before we start the next step.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So you have our comments, and that's, we're there on it, and we look forward to improvements. And we're going to take a short recess. Thank you.
Ma, ma.
Okay. We're back. We're going to reconvene our meeting. We're going to reconvene our meeting, and this portion of the meeting is a continuation of our workshop. And I think we'll do it this way. We will work, and in a bit, we'll have a brief staff presentation, and then the commission will continue working as we were working. And then during our work, we'll interrupt and have some public comment. That's not really an interruption, it's part of the work. But we'll get something done first, and then when the commission is feeling ready for it, we'll do the public comment, and then we'll return to our chin-pulling and head-scratching. Okay, so with that, Ms. Wees?
Thank you, Chair Larson. As you said, this is a continuation of a work session on the Plan Santa Barbara general plan update, and we have a few preliminary comments Mr. Casey will make.
Good afternoon, Chair Larson, Commissioners, Paul Casey, Community Development Director. Just wanted to put some context for your discussion today, which, as Chair Larson said, really is a continuation of your work session, which was held over in the David Get Part Meeting Room a month or so ago. And one of the questions that came up was bringing council up to speed, and I just wanted to provide some context about how we're planning on doing that, and the role we'd like the commission to kind of help us with that. And then kind of setting the framework really for the first half of 2010, which we hope and strongly would like to be kind of decision time, so that we can be moving this process forward. And I think that there is quite a bit of unanimity to get to that point across the board. So we have a new city council coming in next year. We've just finished an election. We've got three new council members. Fortunately, one of them is a planning commissioner, so he's going to be very well-educated on the Plan Santa Barbara process. But two of them need to be brought up to speed, and quite frankly, I think the entire city council needs to be brought up to speed and put into context about where we are with the Plan Santa Barbara process. And so, working with the city administrator, Mr. Armstrong, knowing that this new city council has got a lot of things on their plate that they have to hit the ground running on. They have a very difficult budget situation that needs to be resolved within their first six months. They've got youth violence and gang task force efforts to be working on, and Plan Santa Barbara is on the top of their to-do list as well. So what we've decided is that in early February, we would really like to ground the entire council on where we are with Plan Santa Barbara, what it is, get to the basics of what it is, what we're trying to do, what's been accomplished to date, and where we stand kind of as of February 2010, so that they're brought up to speed and educated and can observe and watch the process as it unfolds over the following months in an informed manner to allow them to make the key decisions that they're going to have to make to kind of bring this phase of the process together and move into implementation and what those priorities are. So the plan is to have a work session with them in February. They haven't had the benefit of being as engrossed in the details as the planning commission, and so we need to bring them up to speed, we need to explain to them the release of the draft elements, the land use element and the housing element, explain what they should be looking at in the draft environmental impact report and how that should inform the decision-making process, and also explain the work that the commission then is going to be doing in the following months, so that they can pay attention to that and keep them informed and educated such that once recommendations from the commission are forwarded to them, they're capable then of taking this big effort and making decisions out of it. And so, just wanted to put that in context. I think the letters that most of you wrote is very informative and helpful to us. We'd like to talk to you today a little bit more about how to bring them up to speed in a work session format. We'd like one, two, maybe three commissioners to attend that meeting, to give the perspective of the commission of where we're at. We'd even like to kind of frame where we think there's some consensus forming and where some tough issues are. And there's no doubt about it, there's still some tough issues that need to be resolved, and that's what we need to get at. I think that the time is for decision-making. I think everyone's ready to start making decisions so we can be moving forward, and that's where we're coming up to this year, and that's where we'd like to kind of help shepherd, and we'd like your help to get them up to speed and be in a frame of mind to be able to make those important decisions as well.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Thank you. In going over the next steps, as I was preparing for the meeting today, I was looking for a date when Giant EIR would hit our laps for our reading pleasure. And, you know, I noticed that we have a gap of meetings, the first part of January, and I was kind of hoping that maybe something could be distributed so we could do some heavy reading at that time when we're not as impacted with other reports.
Chair Larson, on the page three of the staff memo, item number three, open house and release of draft EIR, land use element and map and draft housing element scheduled for February 18th. It's, the way that we're planning this open house will be from 10:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., and that will be the official release day, the documents will be available. We're hoping that the planning commission will come by the Faulkner Gallery as part of the open house and pick up their documents there.
Okay. And also, in light of recent experience, how will the public, will there be adequate copies for the public? And how, you know, I just want to talk about that now, so that as you're printing and preparing, that's anticipated.
Yes, we are anticipating to have stacks of CD documents available at the workshop for the public. We're also anticipating that some members of the public will want printed copies, and we're going to have those requests for printed copies issued to us at the open house and have them available. We are trying to manage the cost of that part of the process, so we want to be sure we're clear when we're giving out the printed versions. There's quite a bit of work going into planning for this open house that'll include a lot of notice, working with the local media, outreach to groups so that people know about the open house, as well as briefing tables for information and explanation of the documents that we're releasing. We plan on having the Dr. John mapping video and map information in the breakout room of the Faulkner, and really spend all day talking with people to get this phase started mid-February.
Okay, thank you. Because I know we have the Sandman EIR that we have now, so just checking to see how it's going to sort of stack up, so to speak.
That's the plan as we have it outlined.
Okay. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. A suggestion for Mr. Casey, not to be too presumptuous, but I always find that beginning at the beginning is helpful, and it might be helpful for the new city council. In fact, it might be helpful for all the city council if you send them the link to the state website that describes what is a general plan and what goes into a general plan. It might be good reading for them over the holidays.
Chair Larson.
It's a luminous document, but at least it would ground them in what we're doing.
You're absolutely right, and we agree with you that we need to provide that fundamental information as well. So that's a good suggestion, and it doesn't need to wait until that February meeting. We're meeting, all the departments meet individually with the newly-elected council members and give them briefings, and we hand them over a lot of information and share kind of to-do reading lists, and that should absolutely be one of them.
Yeah. It's online on the state website, so it's easy for them to access it.
Good suggestion.
Thank you. Any other for Mr. Casey, just because we're doing it to him? Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm curious as to what the open house is going to do. It's a good idea to get the community up to speed, so if they have a huge document to look at, then it helps them to get into that a little bit more adeptly than if they just landed in their inbox. But I'm curious, I know a lot of effort is going into this open house and the whole review of the draft EIR, and I'm just, if you can give me some insight as to what you want to achieve by this, then it helps us to better participate and better suggest approaches and ideas.
At the most basic level, the objective is to improve upon people stopping in our office and just being handed the documents. So at the basic level, that's one objective we're looking for. Secondly, we want to give people an understanding of what the document is about and how, you know, what the different sections mean. It'll be a primer on, you know, we prepared a housing element, a lot of people have heard about the state requirements for a housing element. So we're hoping to just give people briefing on what these documents mean, what it means to be in a review period, how best to comment, the options and different ways to provide comment. They'll also be given on the way out, you know, a schedule of meetings that where their comments could be made before this commission. And because we're not quite sure how it's really going to work, we imagine that there'll be peaks and slow periods. So I was talking with the staff the other day, and I envisioned that one or two of us may have a 20-minute conversation with one member of the public, and then other times, if there's a lot of people there at one time, it may be a little bit more of just handing out documents. But like I mentioned, we wanted to make use of the breakout rooms and have tables on all the different topics, so that's, John, do you have something to add?
Yes, thank you. Chair Larson, Commissioner Justice, full commission. Yeah, I think the first objective is to set the context of what Plan Santa Barbara is. And, you know, we will have one discussion about what a general plan is, I mean, some of the most basic information about a general plan update, more information about what the Santa Barbara, Plan Santa Barbara process is, and then an opportunity for people to ask questions. Well, what is variable density? Well, how does it exactly affect my parcel? You know, what's being changed from the old general plan to the new general plan, these designations? What is this moto? What does that mean? You know? And so people can get their questions answered, we'll have lots of staff there. What about the traffic model? Jesus, it sounds awfully complicated to me. You know, can you explain that a little bit to me? You know? What is a VMT? So to try and just connect with the community and to, you know, provide a forum to answer questions, to provide the big-picture context, answer specific questions, and then lay out the schedule when the future public input will occur, you know, with the planning commission, the city council, any other meetings that we have. They'll all be spelled out. And we'll do it in a, we want, the objective also is to do it in a very multimedia-type fashion. As Ms. Wees stated, we'll have a couple of video loops going, one with an introduction to Plan Santa Barbara, another about some of the details of the work we did on the land use map, then a lot of graphics that people can look at and see what changes are being proposed and that hopefully will help stimulate questions, and so people can become more familiar with the process and what the issues are.
Do you have any sense of how big the document is going to be? Is it one, two, or three Sandmans in size, or a half a Sandman, using the Sandman unit of measurement?
Well, hopefully it'll be measured in centimeters, you know? It's going to be...
The EIR is going to be on the scale of the Sandman. You're being presented with the final EIR, which includes the response to comments, which is thicker than your draft, but the draft of the Plan Santa Barbara will be on the scale of the one you, what is that, about almost three inches or something?
Like that.
Yeah. But it'll be on a disc.
And you recall that, you know, it's not just the EIR that's being released that day, but also the draft land use, the draft housing, and the map. That's the purpose, is to release everything at the same time, so people will get a sense of how everything works together.
And unlike the Sandman, it won't put us to sleep. It will motivate us and excite us about what's really going on in Santa Barbara and our future. Thank you.
Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since we have four full days scheduled in February for the real review plus the open house, or March, I think a lot of us are treating the open house as kind of a check-in. Will we be receiving our packets separate from that, or do we go to the open house to receive all of our materials as well?
Our thought was that the commissioners would drop by the open house to receive their materials, and then you can see also what information the public's getting, and you're welcome to hang around if you'd like part of that day. If for any reason, an alternative delivery is necessary for a commissioner, certainly we would do that, but what we were envisioning is that you would come by at some point.
I agree.
All right. Thank you very much. So now that we've discussed how thick it is and how heavy it is, and when it is, we better get to work. On the other part...
Madam Chair, I had a question. The maps that will be presented, which will they be? We're looking at three different, the EIR is reviewing three different scenarios, correct? And will there be three different maps? Or will it be the what was distributed last time for this work session?
Mr. Ledbetter?
Chair Larson, Commissioner Lodge, there'll be a series of maps. We're going to have a lot of maps. There'll be, I don't have a number off the top of my head, but if, hearing you, you're asking me how many land use maps we'll have, we'll certainly have the proposed land use map, and we will have the alternatives that are laid out in the EIR. But in addition to that, there'll be a number of other maps related to, you know, open space, transportation, all the issues in the EIR have at least one map associated with those issues. So there'd be quite a few exhibits and maps.
As I said, this map, which we got last, the first of this session, the first of this work session, meeting this work session, is this going to be proposed as the map, as the recommendation?
Yes. There'll be some adjustments to that map based on our last meeting and the input we got in the last meeting, but there will be a Plan Santa Barbara proposed land use map. Yes.
And with these densities that were...
There'll probably be some adjustments to those densities, yeah. Based on what we heard at the last meeting.
Okay. Well, this is one commissioner who's not ready to go for it, as you know.
All right. Who would like to say anything?
Madam Chair, I'm going to, well, you know, when you're presented with information, you can look at it and say, yes, it covers this, it covers that, and it covers this and the other thing, but it's very hard to spot something that might have been omitted. And I thought that the economic report was going to deal with looking at the city's economy, not just on what kind of density you need to, so a developer can make a profit building some, a few affordable units and a bunch of market-rate units. In '88, '89, there was such an analysis done, was planning commissioner, city council, members of the business community, working with the Economic Forecast Project at UCSB. And one of the basic questions that I've had in back of my mind that I thought was going to be answered in all the reports that were being done, is, is our economy still for outside income based on tourism, retirement income, and some high-tech industry? That's what it's been, but is it still the same? I think we need to consider the, you know, retail, we've got a lot, we're zoned for a lot of commercial, we have a lot of retail, we have a lot of retail vacancies. Things are changing in retail. People are shopping online. Is this something we should be looking at? And that, of course, also affects sales tax and city's finances, tourism, bed tax, an important part of the city's revenues. And I don't see us looking at these issues, which I think are very important. And are there any plans to look at these economic issues?
Chair Larson, Commissioner Lodge, yes, there are. We have commissioned the, an economic consultant as part of MIG that has done the first two phases of, well, now they've completed their work, the first of which was to look at affordability, housing affordability, and that was really the basis of the two workshops we held in July. They have also provided us a fair amount of other background material that's going into the EIR, and you will see economic analysis as part of the EIR. And the two reports themselves are now completed, and we are close to putting those online, so we can certainly make those available to you. That do give some background about the, our existing economy, putting it in the regional context, you know, indicating which of the sectors are alive and well, that kind of thing, so.
That economic study also was initiated with direction to review the prior studies that have been done and the regular forecasting that is done by the UCSB and the local collaborative group. So there is an acknowledgement of the background study that, instead of doing that all over again for our community, we suggested that they review those prior studies and glean from them their conclusions and whether or not they would be projecting any sort of major change. And the study has been worked on the last several months. When it was initiated and we brought the folks on, it was before September of last year. A lot of things have changed, and I think it is recognized that this is a difficult time to be projecting and understanding even some of the changes that we're going through right now. We were just, Rob Dayton and I were just at the Downtown Organization this week as well, talking with them, and that is certainly an interest group in our communities that's very concerned about the economic effects of Plan Santa Barbara and the general plan update policies. And so there is that information forthcoming as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. As you know, I'm not a big fan of the map project. I think it is wrong-headed to make a land use map in a closed-circuit kind of way without neighborhood participation. It almost feels like, you know, something's cooking in the kitchen and city planning, and it's going to be Santa Barbara's surprise, and everyone's going to be served up a big, heaping plateful of it in February. And everyone's going to be served up a big heaping plateful of it in February. And that's just not how I thought a general plan would go. I thought a general plan was going to have a more grassroots level, neighborhood representation, citizens committee, and it could be simple. The time-worn analogy is that the general plan is like a constitution. And a constitution is something where a couple of representatives from each neighborhood, in this case, come together and represent the interests of their neighborhood, and some dialogue takes place, and some policies start to formulate. And then you start to make a map. And this one, to me, has just been bass ackwards almost from the start. And I just sit here puzzled about how that... Well, I shouldn't use the word puzzled because I've overused it. But we're still cooking this thing up, and occasionally we'll get a letter from someone like Ms. Kramer, who wrote in from the Milpus area, said, wow, I saw that on TV. And property in my neighborhood's going to go from a recommendation of 12 units per acre to maybe 46 units per acre, and nobody told me this. And how am I going to know? And how am I going to comment? It seems wrong to me that we don't have neighborhood input at this point. And so that's the one flag that I'm waving right now, and I'm going to keep waving it. I like it that we're going to have a big workshop, and that there'll be TVs and video and multimedia, and that'll all be very exciting. But it's no substitute for face-to-face contact, and I think that's missing still after four years. Thanks.
Madam Chair, could we have the commission talk about... I'd like to divide the comment from Commissioner Jacobs into two, just for purposes of a little bit more discussion. One is, I think it would be good to hear from the other commissioners, and if staff needs to add as well, on the relationship of the update of the land use element and a corresponding land use map. And that here in this room, over a series of meetings a couple of years ago, this commission made it pretty clear that the update of the general plan land use element was essential. And that the map, of course, along with it, Commissioner Thompson made reference to referring the council to the state website regarding what constitutes a general plan and why you have them. They are really essential pieces of a general plan that need to work together and be consistent. And so I just want to get a sense of the commission as a whole, and perhaps in response to Commissioner Jacobs' concern about why are we doing a map. Now, how we do the map, and what kind of outreach and discussion in the community about the map, as well as any number of the Plan Santa Barbara issues, I think is a very valid point, too. I think they both are. But I just want to separate them a little bit because I have felt and understood lately from the last two work sessions where Commissioner Jacobs brought this up, a concern that I'm the only one answering this question for Commissioner Jacobs. And I have a pretty clear recollection that the direction we're on with the land use element and the map has a lot to do with commission direction. And I would just like to know if that's still there, or if somehow the commission as a whole sees this question, sees this as a question, why is this map update being happening right now?
Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, I've been a strong advocate of getting a land use map out on the table to get the discussion going. I've been beating my chest on this for a couple of years now, I think. And for me, the map is the way to connect the policies that we've been working on for the past two years, the text, the words, the sentences, the concepts, the ideas and the creativities that we've gotten from listening to the community over the past four and a half years, and working with staff over the past four and a half years, and take and connect those words and images to the ground. And it's just not a map. It's kind of a way we translate what we think into what we do and the message we send to the community about how the city evolves. And it's been evolving in one way with a whole variety of things, and we've been rethinking that in terms of sustainability. And so my goal in getting a map out on the table was to add more clarity to how you implement the policies in a geographic way. And I see that we have gotten focused in a very detailed way, given the technologies that we have today, on almost a parcel-by-parcel basis. And I think that parcel-by-parcel basis is what gives me, not necessarily trouble, but it gives me pause in the amount of the limited resources that staff has, and the financial budget that you have to get the job done, that so much work is going into that detail. And so it's not that I'm trying to send mixed messages here. What I'm trying to do is to get the map to do a good enough job that we can move on from where to how. And that is where the breakdown in my expectations has surfaced. And I don't know how else to describe it, but...
I just want you to know, we're pretty much there, that the map is just as it was presented. There's a lot of level of detail, and people that will be concerned about certain areas. But I think we've pretty much arrived at that draft piece to speak from and speak to.
I hope you're right.
It's not done.
And I know we will get a map. But it's like, in each of our minds, what the map is, is different. And so you all are thinking of this as serving one particular need or objective, and I might be thinking about it a little bit differently. And Ms. Lodge, or Ms. Jacobs, or Mr. Thompson may be looking at it with a different... And we never came to... I don't think we came together on what the collective description of that, what its components really were. And so that may be contributing to some nervousness, at least on my part, is I know I've made strong comments here and there, whether it's about the MODA, and now we may be losing a little momentum on the MODA. But it's still a little bit of a mystery to me. And I'm getting worn down here. And so it doesn't sit as well as it might have a year ago or two years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Justice. We'll have Ms. Lodge followed by Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'm getting a little puzzled, perplexed here. Mr. Justice, you suggest that the council place a hold on staff's efforts to make the general plan map consistent with the zoning ordinance. The general plan is supposed to determine the zoning, not the other way around. And I fully agree with you there. And that would fit with what Ms. Jacobs has been saying, you know, that we're doing the map before we really know what the general plan is going to say, unless everybody's ready to accept what the staff has proposed. But I don't see that here.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, followed by Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm puzzled by what Commissioner Lodge just said. The map, the land use map, is part of the general plan. It's not something that comes after the general plan. So a land use element without a land use map is only half of the equation. You can't have one without the other. It needs to be fully vetted out on the map. And we continually run into problems where the old bubble kind of map that just was in very broad generalities created all kinds of conflicts when we are required to look at if the zoning and the general plan agree on a particular parcel when it comes up for some action. And so what staff's been doing is to try to use modern technology to get the map down to the same level of detail as a zoning map so that it can be useful without having one of these conflicts every time that we run into one of these bubble map issues where we have a two-inch-wide line on a quarter-scale map, you know? So I don't know what folks are thinking, but from my perspective, the land use map is an essential part of the general plan. And if we're going to come out with a land use element, you have to come out with an updated land use map at the same time.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Lodge, and then Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, we have to have a map. The question is, what order are they done? What is the map based on? And that's where I'm having a problem.
Madam Chair, can I just provide a quick response for your consideration?
Sure.
Commissioner Lodge, and the Plan Santa Barbara policy preferences direction is the basis for the land use element update. And we held a discussion with the council, the commission also, on a review of the existing land use element as well, saying there's a lot of important things in the existing land use element, but there's some things that time has definitely taken a different turn and passed. We've completed a lot of things in the existing land use element. So our direction to update the land use element, we feel, is pretty clear, based on this document, as well as preserving from the existing land use element, things that work, things that don't need to be changed. Those are clear, and they would remain. And then, as we worked through with you several months ago, things are needing... Don't need to be there anymore. The work session we had with you a couple times back where we reviewed the map, Mr. Ledbetter explained that from the oceans and hillside, the lower densities and the hillsides and the one dwelling unit per acre, the single-family densities in the Samarkan and the San Rokey, the Mesa, all of those basic components of the land use map are remaining the same. We have not had any significant direction from this commission or the community at large to do a radical adjustment of the planning for our community. So much has already been set, and I've heard you all say that before, and it needs to be preserved and enhanced. So the land use map is to be in sync with this policy direction. This policy direction, as well as our experience with the old map and its deficiencies, do require, we believe, some changes. So in getting into the details, there are areas such as Milpus Street, such as Bond Avenue, such as Cottage Hospital and the former St. Francis, and so forth. So we've highlighted those areas for your consideration, for the community consideration. And we want this review of the draft map to be the time to now be looking at, how should those areas be designated? And how are they now? Do you want to leave them as they are now? We have a general plan map. So for Milpus, there's a big swath of a neighborhood with a commercial land use designation. So this process now is when we're talking about it. And then that goes to, I think, Commissioner Jacobs' second point, is now the right time? Is this the right forum? How much outreach? How is it being considered by the public? Will that work? I think that... I understand that is your... What I'm terming is the second part of your question. But just back to the first part, it is based on the existing land use element and the policy direction. I don't think it would be based on anything other than that. Unless you think so, please let us know.
And I just might add to that. Frankly, the most contentious part about it is the variable density. How do we deal with the densities where we try to reconcile the need to build more affordable housing and to keep things just the way they are? You know, we hear from the two polarizing sides of the community that go back and forth on it. And that is... That's the most... That's our biggest challenge, frankly. And I think that people feel pretty comfortable with the basic land use patterns, and we're not proposing any radical changes at all. A lot of it is cleanup, frankly. But then it comes down to the question of how do we achieve that affordability and maintain our community character, you know? And what role does the MODA play so that we do this in the most sustainable way we can? So, you know, over the last few months, we've come at it from a couple of different angles. You know, we brought the economists in, they recommended much higher densities. Community doesn't really feel comfortable or appropriate with these levels of densities, and especially in relation to preserving our historic resources and how that might play into it. So, you know, there are some tough decisions here. And the density decision, those decisions are among the most difficult. But, you know, in terms of the map itself, the map is pretty much done. And I mean, Commissioner Lodge, you said, well, is this the map we're going to be looking at? Well, if you look at the land use patterns, pretty much, it's done, you know? But if you look at the densities, hmm, we've got a ways to go on those. And, you know, how we're going to reconcile those and how they're going to work with, you know, trying to promote affordable housing and trying to maintain our community character and do it in a sustainable way, you know? That, in a nutshell, is what our challenge is. And so, you know, we've been trying different things and, you know, working with you as a commission, working with the public, to try and work that out. And these are not easy things to contend with. But there's been a lot of good work that's been done by you, the commission, and by the input that we've got from the community in establishing and recognizing that, you know, we're pretty well set up here in terms of maintaining the good work that, you know, we stand on the shoulders of giants here in terms of what was done previously dating back to the 1850s, you know, or 1750s, and the planning decisions that were made. And so there's not any big, huge, radical changes in terms of the land use map. It's a lot of cleanup stuff. But there are some inherent tough decisions that need to be made. And, you know, obviously, by the concern of the commission now, you know, we haven't... We're not there yet. We're not there yet on our densities and how we're going to resolve those. So we need to keep working at it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's easy to confuse a map with a destination, and I don't see this map as being our destination. But it's a gridwork or a way to lay out our priorities. And what we're really trying to set ourselves up for with Plan Santa Barbara is utilizing adaptive management so that we can use the map as a tool to guide us along a path. We're never going to reach a point which is the future. We're never going to be able to turn around and go to the past. It's a continual process, and we're using the map to help guide us along the way and establish what are our priorities. If we're shifting our clay, which is our future growth or our resources, how do we want it to shift? And I don't see a land use map as being an answer. It doesn't mean that anything within a specific circle, that every parcel's going to get built to that density. It just says if you're going to shift the clay from one area to another, that's your priority, and it should happen within that area. But it doesn't say that everything within that land use zone's going to be built to that density, or anything in another land use zone's going to be built to that. It's just... It's a direction of where do you want it to shift toward, not that it's all going to happen. And I think that, you know, distinct land uses have created part of the issues that we're grappling with today. We need to be more flexible within those land use zones so that you can allow distinct neighborhoods and nodes and have all those other items that are even at a smaller scale. You look at a land use map, and it all looks the same because it's the same color. So let's not take the land use map as a given, set, rigid document. We're trying to set this up with adaptive management so that we can work it and use it in the future without having to change a rigid map, you know, every few years because the world has changed or we have a different idea. I mean, the map is not our destination. It's just a tool to help us, guide us along the way. So let's not look to the map to give us an answer. I'm hoping that, you know, what we see coming out of the EIR and so forth is, and we've talked about it before, is more like the cafeteria plan. And we see the results and consequences of certain choices. We can take those items and combine them in different ways to come up with... We can take those items and combine them in different ways to come up with maybe a different scenario that we didn't even envision yet. So we're trying to learn from all the individual pieces so that we do have flexibility into the purpose or into the future, but at least we have guidance. It's informed decision-making, because we know the consequences before they happen. But it's not a set answer, and none of us here can figure out probably who's going to be on the Commission in five years, or what the world's going to be like, or what the economic scenario would be. But we need to set ourselves up with tools to allow ourselves to get there. So I think it's more of a tool than an answer.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartlet. Commissioner Justice, then Commissioner Lodge and Jacobs.
Yeah, I'm trying to be coherent on a couple of things here. For me, the disconnect is that Commissioner White and I have requested that more detail go into implementation strategies. And for me, implementation strategies is how you get from the text to the graphic. And if you're talking about implementation strategies that focus in on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood approach of taking the broad policies in the Policy Preferences Report and then applying those, then that gives you the nuts and bolts with which to create a map that has meaning and connection to the policies. And having not seen the full text of the plan without that, I don't, I don't know that I'm going to see that connectivity, and I'm not sure that we're going to get as much utility as I would like out of the land use map. And yet, we went and spent a considerable chunk of change on an economic study that told us largely what we expected, which was that it takes a lot of units per acre to get affordable housing or workforce housing. And those numbers are very scary to a number of people if you just look along that continuum of land use. So what I think we need to be clear about is to communicate to the Council the importance of being able to connect the dots between the policies, the strategies, and what it looks like geographically. And it may well be, and the other thing is, I find it amazing that this, if this is a cleanup exercise, I don't understand why it's taken five years to do the cleanup. That's an awful lot of resources to do a cleanup. I think we're, I think we are charting some new territory here. And I think we're, as Ms. Weiss and I have discussed over the years, we're modernizing the general plan. We're not just cleaning it up. And we're modernizing it because we see things that are beyond our control, that we want to be able to create resiliency in this community to respond to over time. And there's a lot of uncertainty out there. So we're all nervous. And so we've got to get beyond that nervousness. And I just want to get on with it. I want to get product to the Council to make a decision on and use their leadership and do it in the next 12 months. Because I am tired of this exercise. And I'm sure you're just as tired as I am. But I'm getting cranky. And you're not allowed to get cranky because of your civic responsibility here. But I'm kind of cranky now, and I want to see something different happen because it doesn't seem to me that doing it the way we've been doing it is going to get us to where we need to be. And that's why I put together my comments, to try to focus in on overlays in specific areas, leverage the neighborhood energy to do what needs to be done, to give the neighborhood associations and individuals a voice that they feel they can use to be heard. And I don't think that, when you get down to the neighborhood level, folks are, have that sense that they have been heard, either that they want to change something or that they want to keep something the same. So they don't own this process yet. And unless we get that ownership to get in front of Council and articulate what needs to happen in bite-sized pieces over the next 12 months, I continue to be worried that we won't get there. So I want to help get there.
Thank you, Mr. Justice. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. Back to the map, and I can't quite, obviously, we need a map. There's, nobody's questioning that. The map is part of the tools of discussion. My discomfort is with how the map's being made. And to characterize it as a cleanup project, I think, is misleading to the public. It will certainly be a guidebook for the Council and for the next discussion. And it is not just a cleanup. I don't want to get too much into detail, but one big difference between the existing map and the new map is that zoning lines are being drawn down the middle of streets rather than parcel by parcel. And the old urbanists and the new urbanists have continued to use parcel-by-parcel zoning, even though it's uneven and not real pretty when you look at it, because that's how a street front is made. Each side of the street is going to have the same kind of zoning because that's how the public realm is used when someone goes down the street. So to have, and that's what we have right now. That's what the old Santa Barbara map is. It's a streetscape map. And what this extremely tedious and detail-oriented expenditure of staff time has been to clean up the map has been to undo that good kind of old urbanism and what is the new urbanism as well, and instead, put lines down the middle of the street because it's more convenient, I guess. But it'll create a situation where one side of the street has one kind of zoning and the other side has a different kind of zoning, and so now the street is just going to look different from how it has in the past. And I can't even imagine how many staff hours and how many staff dollars have been expended on going and tweaking each parcel so that it doesn't go the way it used to, but now it goes down the middle of the street to clean it up. So that's the last time I'm going to talk about that level of minutia because I know that we're not going to agree on it. But I do hope that when the public is invited in February, that we have, in equal displays, the old map, the before picture, and the new map, so that the two can be easily compared. Because I don't, I don't guess that the average citizen is likely to be an expert on what the current zoning map looks like. So how are they going to be able to tell if they do or don't like the new map? They can't compare apples to apples. And so the best scenario would be to have a very clear and easily comparable old map, new map, so that people could say, okay, here's my piece of property, here's where I live, here's my neighborhood, and here's what the map is like today. And then here, on this other map, is my same piece of property and what's being proposed in the new map, so that people can have that comparison.
Madam Chair, can I just try to clarify something?
Certainly, Mr. Casey.
I just, the map is creating a lot of dialogue today. We have a good foundation of a map, and what's been layered on the map is what was in the Policy Department's report. But the beauty of the modern technology is the map is very easily manipulated now based upon direction that the Planning Commission and Council can provide us. And so if there's something we don't like the map, it's not a three-year process to unravel this thing. It's really, it's a modern GIS-based map that can be easily manipulated to be changed based upon direction of the Commission and the Council. And so I just, it's a good tool that we have now, as Commissioner Bartlet was saying, that's easily adjusted based upon the policy direction that we want to go as a community.
I was excited by the map because it was big enough for me to read.
Also, we did receive Commission direction to do just what Commissioner Jacobs was saying, is look at compatibility across the streets and where you draw the lines. So we've taken that direction to heart. So I think the proposed map does that in many locations, not in all locations. And in some places, we're still, you know, drawing the line more aligned to the zoning. So we're considering where is the zoning boundary, what is the land use, what is the plan and the vision, kind of a multitude of factors, but you-
I'm not trying to belabor it, Betty.
Well, you did give us that direction if you had any other direction.
Want to see map before and map after side by side?
Yes, we will do that.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that I think you gave us-
I want everyone to be able to see it. So I'm hoping, I'm expecting that when we get to the public display, it will be really easy for people to find their property, their neighborhood, see what it looks like now, and see what's being proposed.
Yes.
Can we get that?
Yes, absolutely.
That's all I'm asking. I'm not trying to make this go any longer than that.
No, no.
In fact, we can do it at a neighborhood level. So that will be done.
Yes, that will be done. I just wanted to clarify your comment about where the lines are drawn, because you did give us direction before the Commission. And so you described it as now being different areas across the street from each other, and we actually had an exercise to look to avoid that. So I just wanted to let you know that we think we heard that direction from you before. So it should be responsive to that. Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ledbetter, perhaps you misspoke. You said the economic consultant recommended these densities. Wasn't it just simply a report saying what it would take to get a developer to build, you know, to be able to make a profit?
Thank you for the clarification.
Oh, okay. All right. Then, Mr. Bartlet referred to shifting the clay, which reminds me that for a while, there were comments being made by staff about moving density from outside, increasing density in the MODA and reducing density outside the MODA. It doesn't seem to be anywhere around.
We heard that comment at the last meeting, loud and clear, and we're making those adjustments.
Oh, okay. So there will be downzoning going on outside the MODA?
There'll be some adjustments, yeah.
Okay. Well, again, and then on the map, is what you're saying that this shows the land uses, but the densities of those land uses are still to be determined?
Exactly.
In some areas. Where the density is clear in terms of the single-family areas, that would remain. The R2 12 dwelling unit per acre would remain. The problem is that now, when you look at the land use map, the highest designation of residential density is 12 dwelling units per acre. But we know that's not the case. We know that the land use element talks about the variable density approach and that the zoning ordinance has a variable density approach. And so we are remapping now to show a distinction of, there's 12 dwelling units per acre in some areas, and then there's some other level of density. And so we're mapping it with color differentiation. The number that goes attached to that, how large the variable density range is, up to 27 dwelling units per acre, up to 35 dwelling units per acre. That's the nut in terms of what's the growth scenario, what are the resources. But the mapping part will now improve upon, on that problem now because it shows that all 12 dwelling units per acre and it's not. So we're going to have different colorations to distinguish between those areas.
As projects have, the way it works now, that determination is made on variable density-
Right.
-on a project-by-project basis.
Mm-hmm.
And so we've been able to do things like, the city has been able to do things like Casa de las Fuentes or El Correo, even though it's 12 units to the acre.
And that ability to do special projects will still remain. That concept was something that we also presented at your last work session, that, and I think you all were saying, don't specifically show that special density in a mapped area. Talk about it as a tool, as a tool for rental housing, as a tool for, I forget what term Commissioner Jacobs used, but the truly civic or municipal affordable housing, that community benefit. So it won't be mapped, but it will be policy, as it is now, in both the land use element and the housing element. So we got that feedback from you at your last session.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Justice?
Just one last note on this mapping thing. You know, we, the Commission spoke in a fairly coherent voice in saying that the MODA should be shrunk a little bit from its original direction, from its original limits. But I think we're all pretty much on the same page of saying that it still needed to be in the coastal zone, and it still needed to encompass the train station and get close to City College. And yet, that's not what I see on the map that we saw the last time we met. So that leaves me with a sense that, yeah, you can suggest things, but we're not necessarily going to follow that direction. And so, and so that's all I have to say.
The challenge, of course, Commissioner Justice, is, is that the entire Commission saying that? Or is that one Commissioner saying that? And that, but it is a challenge when, you know, that, that's one of the reasons we felt like this was a very good exercise for you, to be able to come up with, you know, the direction that you see things are going and get, you know, seven votes across the board of, you know, this is where we have points of consensus and this is where we think it should be going. I mean, that's useful for the Council, but it's also very useful for us. And we, these work sessions, we get a lot of input, and, you know, it's informal input. And, you know, we need to, there's a certain art there in terms of trying to gauge, you know, what seems to be a consensus position, if you will. And one Commissioner may be very outspoken and strong on one particular issue, whether it be the size of the MODA or whether we should take on the Coastal Commission at this point or not. Others, you know, may feel very strongly about the density and how density shouldn't change. And so that's one of our challenges, and we take that on, you know, that's what we're paid for, basically. But I just want to convey to you that it's not always that clear, and that it's consensus across the board, you know, six votes, take on the Coastal Commission now and extend the MODA and housing into the West Beach area.
Thank you. I want to just make a comment that I think the letter from Ms. Kramer is, right now, what it's about. Because this is, this is a neighbor reaching out to us. This is not us reaching out to them. This is a reaction to something that is very important to someone, and she's not in an organized neighborhood. So I think that it's very important that this be tackled as soon as possible because we don't want, we don't want people like Ms. Kramer be left behind. And I know we did outreach early on, you know, we had the workshops at the Faulkner and things, but now that you're getting ready to go to the neighborhoods, I think it's really important, because I'd like to have 10 or 15 letters that say, great, we'll be there, or whatever, we didn't understand this, we don't want that, or however it shakes out, rather than, oh, this is the first I saw. So we really need to get there in those terms. I consider the map to be kind of like a piece of putty. And the big map, as I said, getting the big map was a huge boon because I could read it and I could really tell what was going on. And that's, and I think it's a huge tool for making policy consistent with the implementation that we'll do. And policy consistent with zoning. You know, take a little corner like the IHOP corner of Valerio and State, and we know, and that I saw is in the, it's in the red zone. And right next to that IHOP is a building that is used for nonprofits, quite nondescript, probably 60s, 70s architecture. And right next to that building is the finest, one of the finest block of Victor- of the finest block of Victorians we have. And how we zone and implement along that, just for that street alone. We could clobber that street or not. So, I like the map because it helps me identify historical resources, see how our policy is going to impact what we're doing. So, it's, but as I appreciate it, I understood that it was not difficult to update or change. So, I appreciate that. Now, I have two lights on. So, let's see. Mr. Bartlett, and then Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to go back to some of the discussion that we had in our last meeting. And it was really one of the comments or topics that Joe Androlitis brought up. And I think that within given land use zones, we can handle neighborhood distinctions and unique qualities, similar to how we do parking within the central business district. You have zones of benefit, and you can, you can recognize nodes or areas where a little more density is appropriate, and other areas where you're near historic resources or other elements where it isn't. And you can really customize that overlying zone to really fit the neighborhoods and what's on the ground. So, I think that that's sort of the neighborhood approach to land use mapping. And we've certainly used that for years for other resources. I'd like to see us maybe apply that, you know, toward density and other attributes that we would like to customize to match up with the neighborhoods.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
That policy direction, I think, was started in the policy preference document. But because of the recent work sessions we've had, the idea has crystallized more, and it will be in the land use element as policy implementation. So, I'm just interjecting here because I want to give you all the feedback that that is the appropriate evolution of the policy preferences book, based on the inputs that we've been getting from you in the community. Mr. Commissioner Justice, you would see that kind of implementation. The land use map is both a beginning and an end state. It's a little bit in flex. It doesn't tell the complete story because it's only one layer in the story. So, it would have subsequent layers as the story continues with the neighborhood outreach. So, which is also in the plan as the sustainable neighborhood plans move forward. So, I'm trying to give you this vision that I think we could be in agreement on. That this is the stage we're at now, and it is, it's a roadmap. It's a path, and it does have many layers. So, the land use map won't show all those layers yet, but the guidance will be in the land use element to go with it. And once you get into the neighborhood level and walk down Valerio, and that whole little upper, I don't know, we call it Upper State, that portion of State Street, all the historic resources would be mapped also. And the density levels or floor area ratios on State Street would be different than as you move to Chapala. And so, that's the long-term vision that your land use element is going to have. Because that's what we've heard the community say and what we've heard you say. And the map will be a starting point, and to some degree, an end point. But, there's a lot in between, which is the different layers. That's how I see it. I hope that helps. I hope that's the same sort of vision that you might be seeing, too.
Thank you. At this point, is the commission ready for some public comment? Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. We have Commissioner Jacobs. Are you sure? Come on.
Well, Mr. Ledbetter said, asked of Mr. Justice, is this the opinion of one commissioner or is it a consensus? And one thing we were looking for in our work today with people submitting stuff in writing was, well, can we look for where there's consensus? And I see consensus around the neighborhood voice. And I hope you're hearing it, too. I hope you're seeing that. I think every commissioner is saying, we want to hear from the neighborhoods now. And I'm not hearing that in your timeline or in your discussion. I'm hearing, we'll get to it. It's in the policy preferences. It's going to happen. Don't worry about it. I wish I could get something a little more substantive in terms of what's going to happen and when. I don't hear that I'm going to get that today. But, what I hope staff takes away is that there is a consensus on that item. You're looking for consensus, and you definitely got one on that. So, I hope that we'll hear something equally concrete back.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. If I could just respond to that-
Surely.
And I think it's also responding to you, Commissioner, or Madam Chair, about the letter from Betsy Kramer. I did call Betsy Kramer this morning, as a matter of fact, and talked to her about it. And one thing that I explained to her is, you can approach a general plan update from a number of different ways. And what, the decision that was made early on here was that we were going to establish a framework for the general plan, and we were going to try and tackle the big citywide questions first. And the most pressing, of course, was our growth management program, and the fact that, you know, it expires at the end of this year, and how we were going to deal with that. The other one was the state mandated housing element. That was the second big part of that. And then, third, frankly, at the urgency of the planning commission was tackle the land use element, do it now, and get that land use map in shape. So, those are the three big picture items that we were asked to do on a citywide level, not taking a neighborhood-by-neighborhood approach. Now, we did take a year out of the process to look at Upper State Street, which effectively is a neighborhood, and we spent a fair amount of time and resources on that. And I pointed that out to Ms. Kramer, and she says, yeah, I did go to that process. And I realized there wasn't anything really I was concerned with because it didn't relate to Milpus. And I understood that there was, you know, this bigger process going on. But, I think it is hard for people to grasp, really, that the general plan process, until it comes in your property, into your neighborhood, and it's going to affect your parcel, some people just don't pay attention. And that's totally okay. That's totally understandable. But, it was a conscious decision on us as a community, as you as the planning commissioner of the council, to take on these citywide big questions first, and then get into, you know, the neighborhoods, and get into that level of discussion. And, you know, we certainly hear loud and clear from the commission that the neighborhoods need to be heard from. We couldn't agree more. But, you know, we also hear, how come it's taking so long? Why aren't you finished yet? You need to get that done. How many, you know, dollars have you spent on this?
We are naggers.
How many years you've been at this thing? You know, let's get to it. Let's get on with it. Let's finish it up. Well, we are trying to finish up the big picture, Mejere Housing Element Land Use Map now, and then we'll get into the neighborhood discussions. And I know that's not a satisfactory answer for Commissioner Jacobs, but that is kind of the long and short of it. I mean, that's the direction that we've given, and under the constraints we are, to finish it up and get the big picture questions answered first. And frankly, I think the growth control, growth management questions are huge, especially when they get down to, again, to the issues of density. What does it mean on my parcel and in my neighborhood? What is the vision that's being shown on the land use map? Gosh, what does that mean in terms of me on my parcel?
The phrase "not in my backyard" comes to mind. And that's my concern, is that we'll get way, way, way down there in this process, and then we'll have a huge uproar from neighborhoods that would be impacted. And we'll have a lot of resistance, and understandably so. So, I would rather feel how they are now than wait until later, when we're way, way down the road. So-
Madam Chair, on this issue, John provided some response right now, but I'm going to defer to a little bit later to have a more complete response. And we had also talked about getting together just an ad hoc Planning Commission Neighborhood Interest Group, and meeting with just a few of you to talk about the neighborhood issue, outreach, our present, and our future. So, we didn't write it in the staff report, but we had made a commitment that that was something we wanted to do. So, I'll be in contact with Commissioner Jacobs and one or two others of you soon.
Great.
But not today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I think if it's all right with the commission, I'd like to open public comment because I really, we have an hour, and, yeah, and people have to sit in those straight-back seats. So, with no further ado, Deborah Slot has given her time to Connie Hanna. So, Connie, come forward, please, and tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you. I'm Connie Hanna, speaking for the Santa Barbara League of Women Voters. We understand the frustration of the planning commission during the previous workshop because there are serious unresolved issues. We appreciated the input that you've provided about those issues, and we thank you for them. On page two, we agree with staff's analysis of some of the existing consensus, but we strongly disagree about two of them. First of all, you all are well aware of Section 1507 of the city charter, which requires that the city live within its resources. The league had incorporated that policy into one of its longstanding positions on city planning. We disagree with staff that any consensus has been reached, that creating sustainability requires some sort of evolution of that requirement. For example, the water commission has reported that you have enough water to satisfy your present needs. If you increase the density, where will the water come from for an increased population? Certainly not from state water, which now predicts that users will get 5% of their entitlement next year. And not from desalination, which was never planned as a permanent supply because it's so costly. Similarly, your street capacity is about all it's ever going to be, and additional traffic will always be a problem. The league is waiting for the environmental impact report. That should tell us whether we're living within our resources now, and what future availability there may be. When the EIR has been discussed, you will be in a much better position to choose the best density. The league opposes downzoning the R3 and R4 zones, simply because that's where more affordable housing could be sensibly built. Our second disagreement is that there is any consensus around the three options for future growth that are being studied in the EIR. You have chosen to study three scenarios, but some of the public groups have already said that two of them permit too much density and cannot be maintained. A slow pace of growth has been and should continue to be the most sustainable for the city's limited resources. The league can support many parts of the general plan update, but as staff has pointed out, the appropriate levels of density and size of buildings has not been resolved. Neither has the question of how we will live within our resources with the charter requirement to do so. We hope that you can delay some of the most critical decisions about these issues until you've had a chance to study and analyze the environmental impact report.
Thank you very much. Bill Marks, followed by Joan Jamison. Welcome.
I'm Bill Marks, speaking for myself, as someone with whom I generally agree. Madam Chair and Commissioners, looking over the six listed key points of consensus in the three December staff report, which you have before you, I have to be struck by the unresolved and unacknowledged tension between goals like becoming a more sustainable community that lives within its resources, and goals like making affordable housing a number-one priority for future development, a development based on the three different ranges of density sent for study to the EIR. Talk about getting priorities straight. Should we be looking at sustainability within a framework of necessary growth, or at growth within a framework of necessary sustainability? Basically, a sustainable state is, first of all, one in which a given supply of natural resources is in balance with the resource demands of a given population. Plan Santa Barbara documents, as I read them, seem to be saying that we can't know our resource capacity until it gets revealed to us by an ongoing process of adaptive management. This approach seems to me dangerously reliant on hindsight rather than foresight, like figuring out after the horse has been stolen just when we should have locked the barn door. I would rather like to see from the EIR and up front, how much per capita reduction of water usage would be required to make the three suggested levels of increased population density sustainable. Planners need to put the real human substance back into the sustainability framework, so we have resource users and not just abstract numbers of building units or FAR ratios to beguile ourselves with. Having ended my last sentence with a preposition, let me thank you for your attention and for bravely keeping at it.
Thank you very much. Joan Jamison?
She had to leave.
She had to leave. Thank you. Mary Louise Days. Oh, and Betsy had to leave. She would be next. So, oh, thank you. Mary Louise Days, followed by Gil Berry.
Mary Louise Days for the Citizens Planning Association's General Plan Update Committee. We found the communications from four of the planning commissioners included in the staff report to be interesting, and we support many of their points and observations. We agree with the need to preserve the community's scenic beauty, historic character, and architectural controls, diversity, and cultural advantages. As is pointed out by one planning commissioner, land use and development decisions must conform to the general plan under state law. It is not simply another document to be filed away. Three questions that we wish to raise while considering these communications are: One, why does increasing density limits make Santa Barbara more sustainable? Two, what specific evidence do staff and consultants provide to indicate that our present path is unsustainable? Three, can they identify the bases for their assumptions and the components that need to be fixed? The modus high-density categories on the proposed draft general plan land use map appear to be potentially destructive to the existing character of parts of the city, and we cannot support them. This is the very high-density ones. If floor area ratio standards are recommended, they should not replace density standards, but should be used to control building bulk. Our committee agrees that neighborhood voices should be heard. While the current Plan Santa Barbara process has incorporated some community workshops, unfortunately, the process has not had a citizens committee prior, similar to that of the 1961-63 general plan development, and some of its subsequent amendments. We thank you for considering these comments. And Mrs. Kramer left me a letter, her statement-
Oh, okay.
Which is kind of an update of the one you have, I think.
Thank you.
Let's see. "I am not an architect or a planner, but like Mr. Justice, have training in negotiation and mediation. I know that reaching out, asking opinions, listening, showing respect, lead to consensus and support. That's why I am here. There has not been that advising, informing, reaching out to the Lower East Side neighborhoods. I casually watched the rerun and was shocked to wait to see what is proposed for Milpus. The vivid red mark on the draft general plan land use map looked like a bleeding wound on the map. I live in the general area. Last spring, I worked for the census, walking, verifying addresses from Annapamoo down Milpus, and then through the neighborhoods from Salinas to Milpus. It's a diverse and dense section of the city. I thoroughly support Commissioner Jacobs' concern about notice. As it is now, this no outreach is the epitome of top-down decision-making. Mr. Ledbetter explained to me in a call this morning that consultation is planned at some point in the future, when the update is further along. I appreciated his call, but disagree about how and when consultation with the neighborhoods should be or should have been done." We hear often of living within our resources. Being green's great. Modus can be fine. Fossil-free in 33 is a great intention. But, some- Fossil-free in '33 is a great intention, but sometimes it seems to me, most of us here who ask to be consulted are considered ancient in our thinking, and fossils, not likely to be here in '33, putting another spin on that phrase. It's not being a fossil to insist that part of the resources that must be considered before making a plan are human resources. What effect will the likely future zoning changes have on the people and character of this area? What effects of increased development and R3 along Aliso, increased density and traffic, have on Franklin and Cesaro Chavez Elementary Schools, now with about 800 students? What costs of more classrooms? Has anyone been asked? What about parks? There's only Yan and Ali Park, and I personally know how dangerous that can be. Some of the anger we saw in the last election is directly due to seeming high-handedness by good people redesigning the city. I think this plan, at least the part dealing with Milpus, should be put on hold until there is a true outreach, asking the residents what we want, not the city saying what should be, as though the city of Santa Barbara is a concept distinct from its residents. As a harbor commissioner, I believe that my role is to hear what the people of Santa Barbara think about the waterfront and how it functions. As planning commissioners, your roles have much greater depth and breadth, dealing with the character of the city as a whole. We out here count on you to consider us. Thank you for listening. Betsy Kramer.
Thank you very much. Gil Berry and Miki Flax will be following Mr. Berry.
Hello. My name is Gil Berry. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Allied Neighborhoods Association, but I'm here speaking for myself. Staff's proposed density is excessive and represents only the desires of the smart-growth advocates and has not been yet compromised or balanced with the desires of the half the community favoring slow growth. Staff's proposed high-density is extremely growth-inducing. Proper density should be determined by what is needed in order to accommodate the desired amount of growth. The desired future growth per year is an extension of our past growth rate. Our existing density, which will accommodate another 3,000 units in the R3 zone and another 7,000 units in our commercial zones, a total of 10,000 units and 30,000 people, has accommodated our past growth rate, and so is a perfect match for what is proposed. I did a rough calculation, and staff's proposed density will accommodate roughly another 20,000 units, which would be 60,000 people, and therefore is not a match for our desired growth rate and is therefore growth-inducing. It's also far beyond what our resources will carry. Implementing such an excessive high-density will encourage, allow, and cause a population rate of growth faster than the majority of the community desires. The city survey confirms that the community likes the current rate of growth. It is ridiculous for the staff to propose a high-density without taking the time necessary to crunch the numbers to provide you with how many units such high-density will accommodate. Please ask staff to calculate that. Staff may be basing their proposed density on what I feel is a faulty conclusion in the city economic consultants' report, which concluded the density of 60 units per acre is necessary for a developer to make a 15% profit. As you all know, I completed an economic study which concluded that a density of 30 units an acre in the R3 zone could provide a 15% profit to the developer. Developers are proposing projects at our current density, which averages about 20 units an acre, and they would not be doing so if they couldn't make a profit at our current density. Lastly, staff's extensive density is partly based on what I consider a failed inclusionary model, which can be shown to make the housing problem worse and our commuter number worse because it requires 85% of the new units to be high-end units, and these high-end units create new service workforce jobs to provide the services that they require.
10 seconds.
At a ratio of about 1 to 1. So adding 85 new service jobs only providing 15 new homes for service workers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miki Flax, followed by Debbie Cox-Bolton.
I'm Miki Flax, and I'm a member of the HOT Committee of Santa Barbara Can and co-chair of ESPY4All. And I want to just change the direction a little bit from the staff bashing that's been going on to thank them for what I think is a very good summary of the key points of consensus that I observed when I attended all of the public sessions, outreach sessions, that contributed to the development of all of these proposals. When we talk about neighborhoods and outreach, it's important to note that the neighborhood associations represent only a partial segment of the community. The Mesa, San Roque, the Upper East Side, I was thrown out of the Upper East Side Association, so therefore if we depended only on associations, I would have no voice. The downtown area, the Lower East Side, the Lower West Side do not have associations. So we should be cautious about giving our fate to the neighborhood associations that represent only a small segment of the community. Further, when we talk about a constitution and a general plan update, it reminds me of the issue of slavery in an earlier period of our country. There was no question that the elimination of slavery would be very detrimental to slave-owner property values. They would lose a lot of money. But the question of whether we should be a country that included slavery was not based on the property values of slaveholders. It had a larger dimension. And I think that the larger dimension of city planning and a general plan update is also more than how is my property going to be affected. It's how will the city be affected and what will the future of the city look like? In those terms, sustainability, I think, is the key that I heard at all of the workshops and all of the issues, including the fact that affordable housing is the kind of housing that we need and want to the exclusion of other, if that is necessary, is also a consensus in the community. I spent many years in laboratories, and I have a kind of simple-minded approach because of that. I like to see things as formulas, and I have developed a formula, it's now known as the Flax Formula of Growth, and it says that volume divided by the size of units, that is the volume of a building divided by the size of units, equals the density. Seems rather self-evident. But rather than arguing, as we are, about proposed densities or what might happen or so on, perhaps we'd be better talking about the volume of buildings. We've already set a limit on that. We can have four-story, no more than four-story buildings in no more than 60 feet.
Good, 20 seconds.
That's a decided question, yes. The size of the units is the other factor. In order to get to any one of these, you have to know what the other two are, and that is the function, not of the overall Plan Santa Barbara and the Constitution, that is the function of the implementation policies and the specific plans that will evolve out of it. Right now, we have to arrive, conclude this consensus, bring that to the city council, and go forward, based on what we learned from the EIRs, go forward into the specific kinds of planning that will have to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. So Debbie Cox-Bolton, followed by Kellum DeForest.
Sarah Larson, Commissioners. My name is Debbie Cox-Bolton. I'm the executive director of the Coastal Housing Coalition. I had a chance to address the commission at the last term, so I'll be very brief today. The coalition represents thousands of local workers who are still struggling to afford homes here in Santa Barbara, and on their behalf, in November, we commented that we strongly support the goals that have driven the Santa Barbara process to date: increasing residential affordability, maintaining our community character, and doing both of those within a framework of sustainability, which, contrary to other speakers, I believe we can do both things. We believe a key part of being a sustainable community is to stop exporting our housing needs to neighboring jurisdictions, and to that end, we support the staff recommendations to increase density in certain areas, particularly along transportation corridors and in this so-called transition neighborhoods, somewhat along the lines of what Miki said. That's not to say that the size or bulk of the buildings need to be increased necessarily, but just that we're looking at putting a larger, a greater number of units in those same buildings. There's numerous examples of those types of buildings in Santa Barbara that we all find beautiful and compatible with the city, and I think we can look to those as models. Whether or not you agree with me or the staff recommendations, you as a commission and the community have put a lot of effort into this process to date, so we urge you to move forward, continue on the path to lay out a framework that the council can comment on review. Thank you.
Thank you. Kellum DeForest, followed by Lisa Plowman. Oh, Lisa left. Right. Joandrelias.
Good afternoon, Kellum DeForest. Many of the commentators have already covered what I was going to comment on, so I won't save time there.
Thank you.
I hope the Environmental Impact Report will fully address the water issue, especially in drought cycles. Sometimes they forget that we have droughts. Also, in the housing question, to preserve Santa Barbara, we need to recycle our buildings. I notice that there are many currently, and I don't know whether they'll come back due to the changing economy, vacant offices and stores. Could land use be changed, that all commercial and manufacturing areas be allowed residential use? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joandrelias, and he's our last speaker.
Good afternoon, Joandrelias. I'm just representing myself this afternoon. I was going to go into the whole density thing, but we really didn't talk about that this afternoon. I'll be honest, it was kind of painful watching it, and it felt like I was in the middle of filibuster or something. But, you know, to me, let's get to the issue. I mean, I think it's pretty clear what planning is doing. We have goals and policies that were built on a sustainability framework. From that, they developed a draft land use map. And to me, it seems like your job is to just look at the land use map, independent of what you may think personally, and examine whether the draft land use map meets the goals and policies that the community has put together. And to me, I think you need to get in a room and make consensus on that issue. It's simple. It's like being on a jury. You have evidence. You all may have different opinions about something, but based on the evidence, you'll have to come to a conclusion. And that's as simple as I can put it, and I wish you guys can get your heads together and maybe get in a room and figure it out, because I think it's crystal clear what planning's trying to do. And I think the direction that you guys are giving is confusing. I mean, talk about maps, it's all over the map, in my opinion. So I would appreciate it if we can all look at this thing objectively. It's outlined here. Everything that we want to do, that the community wants to do, based on these goals and policies is right here. The land use map is a starting point. If you don't agree with it, then say so. Say why you don't agree with it, list the things you like and don't like, and let's move on. And then let's have the community dialogue with the neighborhoods and whatnot, but let's move past this step, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, one more chance to comment here.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Asked for comments, I didn't make any comments before, but I will make a few comments. I'd start off by saying that today's meeting just proves putting 20 people in a room to discuss the general plan will elicit at least 24 different opinions, so... As a back, starting off point, I think you all know my feeling that this process is taking way, way too long, and I hope we don't bog down going forward. The likelihood is it will have many more months and maybe even stretching into years before we have a fully updated, with all the elements in place, general plan. And it shouldn't have to take that long. I keep being reminded of, when I was in business, we oftentimes used the rule of thumb, 80%, 20%. You can, if you don't, be careful, you can spend 80% of your resources trying to get the last 20% of perfection, and I think part of what we're doing, trying to get it perfect, is expending a lot of those resources to get the last 20% of perfection. Having said that, though, as far as the land use element map, I think that the key to the general plan, from my perspective, is to preserve what's good with Santa Barbara, as was said by a couple of the other Commissioners, and I think there's a lot that's good, and only tweaking as necessary what we have to in this, what is it, effectively a built-out city. It's not like starting with a clean sheet of paper and having to invent things. We know pretty much what's here already, and we are given a task of tweaking what's there and making it better for the future. And having said that, we keep talking about density and affordable housing and all that, and I continue to believe and strongly support that we should incentivize, rather than mandate, policies to achieve our desired end state. For example, providing incentives for rental housing and small-unit, low-cost housing is much more preferred, in my mind, than mandatory inclusionary housing. And a lot of discussion has gone on about the concept of the MODA. I think that the basic idea of the MODA is okay, but I think we should consider it as an overlay concept and realize that we can change the MODA boundaries and transit routes as the city evolves. Transit can move. The buildings, once built, can't move, so I think we should be careful about mandating where we build density because of where the bus currently runs right now. And along that regard, I think we definitely should give some consideration in the general plan about the railroad station as a multimodal transit location. We tend to ignore that, and I know when the MTD was talking about a new bus station, that was discarded offhand, but if we're going to be serious about using rail transit and trying to get people out of cars, I think we have to consider the railroad station, which definitely isn't going to move, and consider that in the general plan as part of our transit and mobility discussions. So I'm not going to go any more in-depth, but those are some of my ideas at this point.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Any from staff?
Yes, just a few. One, I didn't make the preliminary comment, but I wanted to thank you all for your comments that were submitted, and we had, in the staff report, suggested that perhaps your discussion today would be such that you would want to appoint one or two or three members to attend the council briefing. I was also thinking and hoping maybe there would be some consensus points among you all that that appointed member or a staff person could easily get our hands around and communicate to the council as well. So in moving towards wrapping up this discussion, it would help me to know if you just want to see these four, one, two, three, five letters, sent to the council as they are, which is fine, or what, any next steps that the commission is interested in.
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion, because we really have a hard-working subcommittee that's been working for a long time, and I couldn't think of anybody more to recommend to go to council than that subcommittee, because they're really, you know, that's kind of where I feel our best voice is. They've put in a lot of work, and I know it's asking for a little more, but, you know, they're certainly familiar with all parts of it, and I think it would just be, it's almost a no-brainer to me to ask the subcommittee to go to council on our behalf, if they're willing. So that would be my suggestion, rather than draft three other people or parts and mix them up. I'd just ask that the subcommittee goes. Is that okay? Mr. Bartlet?
All I would ask is that the subcommittee represent the entire group. I mean, I think they will.
Oh, yeah, that would be the point.
But I think that's the easiest method to get there. We've already got the committee created.
Yeah, absolutely. Does that help you?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, great. Okay, great, great. Okay, I'll thank everybody for coming today. I know the seats are uncomfortable, but that's earning your chops in this town, that's for sure. So, or maybe it's not your chops. But anyway, I sympathize and appreciate those, the hardness of those seats. So thanks for, thanks for maintaining while we went through our map stuff. And now we're on to our administrative agenda. Any committee and liaison reports? I did attend the HLC meeting. Was particularly interested in the wireless installations that we'll soon be seeing all over town. They'll be undergrounded in some historically sensitive areas, and we will be seeing them as little whip antennas, painted white, on, on our, on our poles. Another treasure value added to our utilities. So, and I don't have the whole details, but I understand, I understood from the meeting that the city has a franchise and that any other providers coming will be leasing that little antenna as well as the provider, the initial provider, G somebody. So, so we won't have a proliferation of little whips. We'll just have the one. And that's, that was the extent of it. They did talk about the size or the type of cabinets and the presence of them in the historic district. So that was the, that was the big deal there. And there was no, anybody else have anything? No?
Madam?
Yes.
I just wanted to, from what you said, people might think there, there's only one of them. Aren't there 52 different locations?
There are several locations. I don't know the total number of locations proposed. I don't know if those 52 are just in historic areas that were looked at, or if it's citywide 52.
I think it's citywide.
Citywide. But my understanding is that, that that's all there are. There are, there will be no others. So we'll see, I guess, literally. And the, there was, there's nothing for the staff hearing liaison this week? And anything else? Yes, Mr. Justice.
Madam Chair, this, this isn't really a committee report, but for the last two days, I've been in Las Vegas at a conference entitled "Adapting to a Dryer West." And the city of Santa Barbara has a pretty effective, and we talked a lot about water consumption in cities and development and smart growth and all those kind of things. And it was remarkable to me that, I think the city has somewhere in the neighborhood of 180, 190 gallons per person per day as a, as a consumption. That's what it was historically. Communities within Santa Fe are now conditioning developments to, to live on about one-third of that. And they are in operation. They're providing a reasonable, affordable housing product that, that consumes about, they're, they're required to consume no more than a quarter of an acre foot per unit per year, which is quite a bit less. And they have some units who are actually going down into the .15 to .18 range. And they're doing so, and it's, it's actually increasing their property values because the new market of Gen X, Gen Y folks are insisting that their, their, their housing communities have an obvious element of sustainability to it. And, and it was just remarkable to me that they could make that level of water conservation institutionalized and make it work on the ground.
Well, since you were out of town, I'll tell you that the city of Simi Valley raised their water rates by 20%. So we will be there. Mr. Bartlet?
To follow up on Commissioner Justice's comment, there was a recent article also, just on our local water use. And Santa Barbara uses 20% more per capita than Glita and Carpinteria, just in today's usage. So we can certainly do better.
Thank you. So we need action and review and consideration of some follow-up draft minutes and resolutions? So draft minutes of September 23, 2009? Any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lodge.
On page two, once again, Mr. Forrest, first name. Some places it's spelled correctly, and some places it's not. So on page two, it's the third line. It's spelled L-U-M, it's L-A-M. I can give this to Julie. Then on page three, where it lists the comments that people made, I'm just, in the future, I don't think this can be fixed now. But it says, "Lee Moldiver could not stay, but submitted written comments on the speaker list, slip." And everybody else gives the gist of what they said. And perhaps in the future, whatever was on the slip could be included, rather than just saying that comments were made.
Thank you.
And then the last two lines, my comments. It says, "I agreed with allied," that there are a lot, comments that there are a lot of secondary units in Hidden Valley. What I said was, "I agreed with allied's concerns about secondary units," and pointed, in Hidden Valley, and pointed out that there are a lot of duplexes there that some Commissioners didn't seem to be familiar with.
Thank you.
And then on page five, I'm sorry, once again, Kellum Forrest's name got misspelled. And Julie, I have these noted on, I printed these pages out, so I can give these to you. And then item four, about two-thirds of the way down, an S is missing from "support." Commissioner Jacobs supports the AMP. And then once again, my own comments. Commissioner Lodge suggested using the assistance of the staff that worked on the city of Pasadena's historic resources element. Maybe what should be in there as well is who helped CPA in drafting its suggested historic resources element. I'd like to make those changes.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you. I have a, I looked at the electronic version, so I have to read it off my electronic data. Also on page five, item four, where my comments are being relayed, the last sentence, which talks about open space. I think the point there was that there are different kinds of open space to be defined. And so I'd like to change it to say, "Specific types of open space should be called out in the document so that parks, comma, public paseos, and privately-owned pocket parks are differentiated." Since open space is kind of an umbrella term, and there's actually different kinds.
Thank you. Any others? All right. And the draft minutes of November 5, 2009? Additions, deletions, corrections? Mr. Thompson?
On page eight, halfway down, item A2, it says, "Commissioner Thompson reported," should say, "reported on two recent transportation events." Colon, "Hot Springs Road and groundbreaking ceremony at Airport Terminal." It actually isn't Hot Springs Road. It's generally called the Hot Springs Roundabout, I think.
Thank you. Any others? All right. And I will be abstaining from the November 5 minutes due to absence. So the two draft minutes plus the associated resolutions. Could we have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, on item five, resolution?
Yes.
043-09.
09.
It's part of what's always there. And I just happened to notice there's a grammatical error on page four. If I can find it.
I think she said page four.
Yes, page four, number five. The first line in italics, it says, "There is adequate water resources." It should be, "There are adequate water resources."
All right. Anything else? Mr. Thompson?
I will abstain from the September 23 minutes because I was not at that meeting.
Okay.
Oh, and I do have another question. I'm sorry, I don't remember this from the hearing. On page 10, number 15, "Inclusionary housing fee." Evidence shall be submitted that the owner has paid the required inclusionary housing fee to the Community Development Department. Was that because that came into effect while that, this was in process? It's been crossed out. November 5, page 10, the very bottom, number 15.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, you'll remember that that, this project, 803 North Milpus, had come into the process before the inclusionary ordinance applied to projects of this size. And that is why that was crossed out.
Thank you. Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to announce that I will abstain from item five on the draft minutes of November 5. And I will also abstain on resolution, resolution 04309.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
I'm ready to move approval. But preceding that, I will be abstaining from the minutes of November 5, item four, and the related resolution number 04209. But with that statement, I would move that the commission approve the draft minutes for September 23, November 5, and resolution 04109, 04209, and 04309, as amended.
Second. All right. We have a mo, oh, under discussion. Mr. Bartlet?
Can we correct the date? I think the minutes are, the draft minutes are September 24. September 24th, not 23rd. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we are finished with our agenda for today. I thank everyone for coming today and for watching. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.